Noviembre 7, reunión del Consejo de la Ciudad de Half Moon Bay. ¿Puedo hacer el llamado de ronda, por favor?
Miembro del Consejo, Rarbeck.
Aquí.
Miembro del Consejo, Reddick.
Aquí.
Miembro del Consejo, Brownstone.
Aquí.
Vicemayor Jimenez.
Aquí.
Mayor Penrose.
Aquí.
Tenemos un pleno.
Gracias. ¿Podemos hacer el juramento de alineación? ¿Puedo hacer una petición para aprobar la agenda?
Se ha movido.
Un segundo.
¿Todos en favor?
A todos.
¿Algunos en oposición? Bien, gracias. El primer item de esta noche es muy emocionante. Es la ceremonia de graduación para los futuros líderes civics académicos. Young people who really care about how government works. Y nuestro clerk de la ciudad, Jessica Blair, tiene algunas palabras para decir.
Gracias, mayor. La futura Academia Civics de líderes es un programa muy cerca y querido de mi corazón. Y quiero congratular a los graduados por su participación. Todos fueron extremadamente involucrados, contribuyeron a las discusiones y actividades de una manera thoughtful y fueron un placer conocerlos a través del programa. Este es un grupo de jóvenes con pasión y emoción y sé que cada uno de ellos va a excelir en los años a venir. También quiero extendir mis agradecimientos sinceros y felicitaciones a Colleen, Maggie, Julissa y Irma, que pusieron mucho tiempo, pensamiento y esfuerzo en el rediseño y ejecución del programa. Este fue el mejor académico y no pudo haberse hecho sin estos cuatro y su creatividad y compromiso con los estudiantes. Espero ver el próximo académico y deseo que cada uno de los graduados de este año tenga éxito al salir al mundo. Continúe siguiendo sus pasiones y cada uno se irá muy lejos. Y recuerde estar involucrado con nosotros. Nos encantaría verte en eventos y asistir a reuniones del Consejo si hay temas que te interesen. Vuelvo a la presentación de Colleen ahora, quien presentará sus certificados. Gracias.
Primero, y solo voy a decir sus nombres porque solo conocí a ustedes a base de nombre. Y no quiero arruinarlo. Así que Jamie, venga. Desafortunadamente, algunos de nuestros miembros no pudieron llegar a la noche, pero está bien. Los dos que no llegaron. Nicole. Lucy. Maddie no está aquí. Basil. Caleb. Villa. Montse. Lyric. María. Y Emily. Gracias a todos. Solo quiero decir que tuve mucha diversión trabajando con ustedes todos durante las cuatro sesiones que tuvimos juntos. Como dijo Jessica, ustedes son tan brillantes, inteligentes y tienen un futuro muy fuerte delante de ustedes. Y viéndolos en la reunión del Consejo de la Ciudad presentando sus ideas de proyecto, haciendo sus preguntas, estoy muy honrado de saber que el futuro está con todos ustedes. Así que otra ronda de aplausos para nuestros futuros líderes. Bien, ahora vamos a recurrir a los miembros del Consejo y vamos a tomar una foto en grupo.
Gracias a ese maravilloso grupo de jóvenes que van a crecer para ser futuros líderes. Esperamos eso. Y ahora tenemos la actualización del fondo de patrones de víctimas de la costa y Karen Decker nos llevará a esto.
Muchas gracias, Madam Mayor, Consejo y comunidad. Es un placer estar contigo. Soy Karen Decker, administradora económica y vitalidad de la comunidad aquí en la ciudad. Los días después del disparo del 23 de enero se muestran de diferentes maneras en nuestras mentes. Para las víctimas y los sobrevivientes afectados por esa violencia sabemos que hay necesidades a largo plazo que continuarán a lo largo del tiempo para años a venir. Establecer un fondo de víctimas en el aftermath de una tragedia es la mejor práctica. Y es algo que la ciudad nunca había hecho, nunca había tenido que hacer. Así que quiero agradecerle, Consejo, por su liderazgo y tomando este paso para pasar la orden ejecutiva que dio lugar al fondo de víctimas de la costa. Nuestro abogado de la ciudad, Katherine, trabajó muy de cerca con la ciudad de Monterey Park y la Fundación de la Comunidad de Ventura para analizar y expedir los documentos necesarios para sacar esto de la tierra. Erica Wood fue instrumental, habiendo establecido un fondo similar después del disparo del festival de gallo Gilroy y permaneció una asesora de cerca durante todo el proceso. Debido al trabajo detrás de la escena, este fondo fue activado dos días después de que la orden ejecutiva pasara. Es mi placer presentar a sus próximos presentadores. Estoy muy grata a estas dos organizaciones que tocaron riesgo y se apoyaron en la gestión de este fondo. Por favor, unirme en la bienvenida a Amber Storia de la Fundación de la Comunidad de los Mavericks y Wade Painter de la Unión de Créditos San Mateo.
Gracias y buenas tardes. Soy Amber Storia de la Fundación de la Comunidad de los Mavericks. Y queremos agradecerles por dar tiempo para darnos esta actualización sobre el fondo de víctimas de la costa. Como saben, el fondo de víctimas de la costa fue establecido para apoyar a los afectados por el incidente de violencia armada que ocurrió dentro de nuestra comunidad en enero de este año. Estamos honrados de compartir el éxito de lograr la meta del fondo, que era proporcionar asistencia financiera directa, sin restricciones, a las víctimas. A través de los esfuerzos colaborativos y colectivos de muchos contribuyentes, el fondo de víctimas de la costa levantó y dispersó un total de $254,142 a 46 víctimas. El mismo fondo está cerrado ahora. Todas las víctimas que se calificaron para apoyo en concordancia con los protocolos del fondo han recibido cheques. Estamos agradecidos por el trabajo del comité de supervisión del fondo, que estaba compuesto por una variedad de representantes según la orden ejecutiva de la ciudad de Half Moon Bay. Su trabajo en redactar y aprobar los protocolos de dispersión del fondo fue verdaderamente invaluable. También nos gustaría reconocer el apoyo colaborativo que recibimos del Departamento de Servicios de las Víctimas del Departamento de Abogados del Distrito de San Mateo. Sus esfuerzos en ayudar a identificar víctimas calificadas para el fondo fueron también pivotales en la éxito de distribución del apoyo. En términos de éxito de financiación, el fondo de víctimas de la costa recibió apoyo de una amplia variedad de fuentes, incluidas donaciones filentropicas de la Fundación de la Salud de California, la iniciativa Chan Zuckerberg, el Chapter de California Norte de la Asociación de operadores de McDonald's Asian, la Fundación de la Comunidad de los Mavericks y la Unión de Créditos San Mateo cedió el fondo con contribuciones de $10,000 de ambas organizaciones. Notoriamente, la jarra de tijeras dedicada al fondo de víctimas de la costa durante los dones de la costa levantó más de $17,000, demostrando una cantidad increíble de generosidad de nuestra comunidad local. La Fundación de la Comunidad de los Mavericks también nos gustaría reconocer el apoyo de la Fundación de la Comunidad de la Valle de Silicon. Fue posible obtener un crédito operativo de ellos que nos permitió involucrarnos con servicios de consultas y servicios de PR profesionales para ayudar a promover el fondo. Estamos contentos de haber tenido el fondo presentado en las estaciones de noticias locales, en la revista Authority y en la revista de noticias a través de un oped de la ex representante de Estados Unidos, Jackie Speer. También nos gustaría agradecer a Karen Decker de la ciudad de Half Moon Bay por su tiempo, energía y apoyo al fondo. Su visión y entrada, particularmente en los esfuerzos de PR, fue tremendamente valorada. La Fundación de la Comunidad de los Mavericks es realmente agradecida por la colaboración con la Fundación de la Comunidad de Créditos San Mateo y por la oportunidad de servir a estas víctimas. Wade va a compartir un poco más de información sobre esos esfuerzos colaborativos.
Hola, soy Wade Painter, CEO de la Unión de Créditos San Mateo y presidente del fondo de la Comunidad de SMCU. Gracias, Amber, y buenas tardes, miembros del Consejo. En tiempos de crisis, es el poder de la colaboración que realmente brilla. En nombre de la Unión de Créditos de San Mateo y del fondo de la Comunidad de SMCU, somos inmensamente orgullosos de haber unido fuerzas con la ciudad de Half Moon Bay y la Fundación de la Comunidad de los Mavericks en formar el fondo de víctimas de la costa para el propósito de levantar y distribuir fondos a los afectados por los disparos de enero. Juntos hicimos un compromiso de asegurar que el 100% de las contribuciones levantadas irían directamente a las víctimas. No hubo fechas administrativas ni sobrepago de ningún tipo deductos de las contribuciones. También reconocimos que el dinero solo no bastaría. De acuerdo, proporcionamos educación financiera a las víctimas y a sus familias. Lo hicimos a través de un taller de educación financiera bilingüe que llevamos a cabo en conjunto con la distribución de los fondos. Nuestro objetivo era equiparizar a las víctimas y a sus familias con conocimientos y habilidades financieras esenciales. Creemos que la educación financiera es un ingrediente clave para una recuperación sostenible de las víctimas y de sus familias. También nos gustaría reconocer la esperanza de la Costa de la donación generosa de tarjetas de regalo para gas y comidas para los participantes del taller de educación financiera. Además, el fondo de víctimas de la costa se encuentra como testamento de la fuerza de nuestra comunidad. En términos del esfuerzo colaborativo así como las contribuciones que se levantaron, reconocimos que la vida de estas víctimas será perpetuamente afectada. Y estamos agradecidos por la oportunidad de servirles a través del fondo de víctimas de la costa. En la cierre, nuestra colaboración en la creación del fondo de víctimas de la costa demuestra que cuando nos unimos podemos lograr grandes cosas en una corta cantidad de tiempo para ayudar a nuestra comunidad a sanar y reconstruir. Gracias.
Muchas gracias a ambos. Eso realmente hizo posible la voluntad de la comunidad de ayudar de una manera que funcionó. Gracias, buen trabajo. Siguiente, tenemos la proclama de la semana de lucha unida. Voy a preface esto al hablar un poco. La semana de lucha unida es un llamado de acción civica local para detener el odio e implicancias implicadas que son una amenaza peligrosa para la seguridad y la civilidad de nuestros barrios, ciudades y ciudades. Cuando las comunidades participan en la semana de lucha unida, están haciendo un compromiso de hacer que todos se sientan seguros y apoyados. Las comunidades pueden contrarrestar actos de racismo, intolerancia y odio al involucrar grupos de faith, advocacy y escuela diversos para participar y ayudar a liderar acciones localmente impulsadas de significado durante la semana de lucha unida. La ciudad de Half Moon Bay está fuertemente en apoyo a nuestra diversa comunidad, honrando y protegiendo a cada individuo, independientemente de raza, credo, color, género, religión, etnología, nacionalidad, orientación o identidad. Juntos estamos unidos contra el odio esta semana y todas las semanas. Gracias a Coast Pride por estar aquí para aceptar tal proclama importante. El importante trabajo que hacen en la comunidad de Half Moon Bay es una parte integral de lo que hace que sea un lugar tan especial y bienvenido para vivir.
Gracias, mayor. Desafortunadamente, Coast Pride no pudo estar aquí esta noche, así que lo dejaremos en su honor.
Genial, gracias. Bien, ahora es mi turno para hablar de anuncios de actividades de la comunidad y tenemos muchas cosas que se van a hacer. El jueves tenemos el evento de la fiesta de los veteranos. Empieza a las 6:00 p.m. en McDoote Park. Esto es para honrar a nuestros veteranos y a sus familias y cuidadores. El sábado a las 10:00 a.m., la casa de Jonson Holiday, con regalos para todos, vino, comida, buen comida y gran diversión en la maravillosa casa de Jonson. El sábado a las 4:00 p.m., la mesa de la fundadora de la cerveza, el evento anual, que siempre es una presunta. Y eso es todo para mis anuncios. Ahora tendremos un informe de las recientes reuniones cerradas de la nuestra abogada Katherine Enberg.
Gracias, mayor y consejo, comunidad. Así que el Consejo se reunió en una sesión cerrada antes de esta reunión para discutir qué item fue la conferencia con el negociador del trabajo. Este es un elemento de seguimiento para la revisión anual del rendimiento del gerente de la ciudad, que fue llevada a cabo en una reunión anterior. No hay nada que informar en este momento, aunque notaré que anticipo presentar un amendamiento de contrato para el gerente de la ciudad en su próxima reunión regular. Gracias.
Gracias. Y ahora tenemos a nuestro gerente de la ciudad, Matthew Tinnister, con actualizaciones del Consejo.
Gracias, Madam Mayor. Tenemos varias actualizaciones esta noche. Pero antes de lanzar la versión de presentación de esto, la parte de esto, quería hacer una rápida actualización sobre algo que se está desarrollando en la comunidad y en las acciones que estamos tomando. Así que el último domingo por la noche, en respuesta a varios incidentes que han ocurrido en la comunidad de Pillar Citos Oak, justo por el camino aquí, el sheriff organizó una reunión de la comunidad para hablar del trabajo que están haciendo para abordar esos problemas y para escuchar de la comunidad sus preocupaciones y cosas que esperaban ver desde la ciudad y desde el oficio del sheriff para hacer que ese barrio sea un lugar más seguro para vivir y para pasar el tiempo. En respuesta a eso y basado en el feedback que recibimos de la comunidad, quería anunciar algunos de los actos que ya hemos tomado así como el trabajo adicional que estamos haciendo. Primero y ante todo, había preocupaciones sobre la iluminación en la área y cuán oscuro es la noche. Saben, Half Moon Bay es una comunidad interesante. Recibimos muchas demandas sobre demasiadas luces en algunos barrios. Pero este particular barrio, con el camino que corre por la raya y hacia el centro de la ciudad de Strawflower, el shopping center, creo que mucha gente lo usa como un lugar para atravesar y correr erranzas noche y día. Y así, la iluminación y la seguridad son realmente cruciales. Y así, hemos identificado algunas áreas que la ciudad tiene control sobre donde podemos entrar y reemplazar parte de la iluminación y actualizar la iluminación para hacerla más brillante y más segura, pero todavía dentro de las restricciones de lo que esperamos aquí en nuestra comunidad. También estamos trabajando con PG&E para reemplazar parte de los fijos de luz o la iluminación que hay en los poleos de energía en ese barrio que son propiedad y operada por PG&E, así como identificando algunas oportunidades para agregar iluminación adicional. Así que con suerte la comunidad verá ese cambio en los próximos par de semanas. Y esperamos recibir feedback de la comunidad para escuchar cómo está y si sienten que hay mejoras allí, si hay más trabajo que hacer. También estamos buscando oportunidades para proporcionar some iluminación adicional en ambos lados de la puerta y en el parque también. Lo segundo que escuchamos de la comunidad fue un deseo de más vigilancia de seguridad. Este es en realidad un tema que se resolverá a una escala más amplia en la reunión de consejo de diciembre 5. El capitán del sheriff presentará información sobre la tecnología de lectura de placas de licencia y cómo evolucionó desde nuestra última discusión de la comunidad sobre esto hace cuatro años. Pero mientras tanto, basado en el feedback que hemos obtenido y el trabajo que ha pasado hasta ahora, he autorizado al sheriff, a un plazo limitado, poner una lectura de placas de licencia en el barrio para asistir a la investigación de algunos de los incidentes que han pasado así como identificar ubicaciones para poner cámaras de seguridad. La ciudad tiene una política muy fuerte al respecto de la utilización de la tecnología de lectura de placas de licencia y en realidad ha sido utilizado por alrededor de 20, o diez de las 20 ciudades ya en el condado de San Mateo. Así que es una política probada y probada. Still es algo que veremos muy de cerca sabiendo algunos de los problemas de nuestros residentes aquí en Half Moon Bay. También, como ciudad, tenemos una política de cámaras para el uso en nuestras instalaciones. Aplicaremos esas reglas sobre quién puede acceder a esas videos, cómo pueden ser accesionados y cuánto tiempo se guardan como parte del despliegue de este piloto. Y lo más importante es que estará limitado en este caso a la investigación de estos incidentes y cuando se consideren resueltos o si escuchamos de la comunidad sobre preocupaciones con privacidad o la forma en que estas tecnologías están siendo usadas, el piloto terminará. Y si queremos hacer algo como esto de nuevo, estará en una escala mucho más amplia y basado en una política que sería adoptada en este nivel. Así que, de nuevo, esto es realmente basado en lo que escuchamos de la comunidad en esa reunión y un deseo de ayudarles a sentirse seguros y cómodos. El sheriff, por supuesto, está tomando otras acciones que normalmente haría en cuanto a la investigación, aumentar las patrullas en el barrio y realmente seguir con los individuos en el barrio que podrían tener una historia criminal que estuvieran involucrados en estos incidentes. Y la esperanza es que a través de todas estas acciones cumulativas, que la comunidad verá un impacto, se sentirá más seguro y que podamos pasar de algunas de estas cosas que han pasado hasta ahora. De nuevo, estamos buscando el feedback de la comunidad. Queremos ser socios en este esfuerzo. Realmente apreciamos a todas esas personas que vinieron la semana pasada. Y mi información está en el sitio web o usted puede acercarme o llamar al Consejo en cualquier momento. Y estoy feliz de hablar con cualquiera de los barrios sobre sus preocupaciones. El capitán Albin, como saben, es muy accesible y quiere escuchar de la comunidad también. Así que estamos tratando de equilibrar las preocupaciones de la comunidad con la seguridad y la seguridad. Y sabemos que es un equilibrio correcto y continuaremos ajustándolo como sea necesario para asegurarnos de resolver estos problemas y ayudar a la comunidad a sentirse más segura. Así que solo quería hacerlo público y si hay preguntas, estoy feliz de tomar preguntas ahora o de la comunidad en el futuro.
No hay duda, Matthew, solo un aprecio por las preocupaciones. Vivo en ese barrio y sé que es realmente crucial que mejoremos la iluminación al menos. Así que muchas gracias por cuidar de eso.
Gracias, Matthew.
Bien. Siguiente, tendremos un update sobre el plan de masterplan de las calles de la ciudad de Downtown de los barrios de la ciudad.
Hola de nuevo, Karen Decker, administradora económica y vitalidad de la comunidad con el oficio del gerente de la ciudad. Estoy contenta de traer esta actualización sobre el proyecto de masterplan del plan de calles de la ciudad. El objetivo de este proyecto es crear un centro de calles más atractivo y accesible y económicamente vibrante de la ciudad. Y queríamos tomar las ideas que escuchamos durante la semana de descubrimiento y empezar a alinear en conceptos de diseño de alto nivel. Así que el equipo de diseño de herramientas tuvo la oportunidad de volver al sitio y ver las condiciones existentes y tomar medidas adicionales. Pero realmente el corazón de la actividad fue proporcionar puntos de toque adicionales para la comunidad para venir y hablar con nosotros y hablar con el equipo de diseño sobre su visión para la ciudad y la calle principal y para proporcionar algún feedback basado en lo que habíamos escuchado durante la semana de descubrimiento. Así que el alcance y la visibilidad de este proyecto son significativos. Llegando de la semana de descubrimiento, me contactó el diario diario para hacer una entrevista y imprimieron una historia de print en adición a nuestra propia revisión local de Half Moon Bay. Los talleres de diseño duraron dos días completos, incluyendo una reunión pública y una segunda convención del grupo de intereses de la comunidad. Hubo un anuncio especial de e-news que saldría en adición a los consecutivos e-news diarios semanales. Y esa lista de suscriptores es de 4,500 personas. Y en estos últimos eventos vimos muchas caras famosas de la semana de descubrimiento. Y fue realmente satisfactorio ver el ciclo de feedback hacer lo que se intentaba hacer, que era construir sobre las conversaciones de la comunidad que comenzaron en septiembre. La diversidad de participantes a través de estos talleres es algo que queremos destacar. Vimos más jóvenes la segunda vez durante los talleres de diseño que lo hicimos la primera vez después de una mayor búsqueda. Vimos propietarios de negocios y arquitectos, residentes de larga vida, propietarios de la propiedad, nuevos ingresos a la comunidad. En un punto, vi a miembros de Beautification en una mesa con un futuro líder civics académico, un de nuestros jóvenes de la escuela secundaria hablando de ideas, hablando de puestos de parque, hablando de calles de bicicleta. En términos del corazón del asunto, estamos avanzando ideas de inicio en diseños conceptuales. Este es un resumen de algunos de los conceptos clave que salieron del taller de diseño y necesitarán ser refinados en los próximos meses. Pero realmente brevemente, la calle principal norte, a la que me refiero como la puerta histórica de la autopista número uno, había un apoyo enorme para los cruces más seguros. La experiencia de llegada en la intersección de 92 y Maine dejó mucho que desear en la mente de mucha gente. Pasar y salir del centro de shopping de la Aces Hardware, el centro de shopping de la Aces, fue un punto importante para mucha gente así como simplemente en general, Lewis Foster Drive. Anybody who has had high schoolers, or even if you haven't, we know what it's like in the morning and at lunchtime and when school gets out. It doesn't feel safe. Y eso apoyó muchas intervenciones de diseño. Para Heritage Main, cuando digo Heritage Main, la puerta histórica de Correios, había muchos comentarios y mucho consenso al respecto de que el parque angulado fuera problemático por una variedad de razones, incluyendo la seguridad. Los costados estrechos no eran populares. Mucha gente dijo que hacía difícil caminar junto a alguien, hacía difícil conducir un coche. Había opciones limitadas de estacionamiento, lo que no condujo a pasar tiempo prolongado en nuestra ciudad. Basado en el feedback de la comunidad, el mayor consenso hasta el momento en cómo abordar estos desafíos se apoya en el parque paralelo como una alternativa razonable al parque angulado, que me dijeron anecdóticamente que teníamos en un momento. Así que si esto pasara, esto sería un retorno completo. Otra idea que quería destacar antes de ustedes fue el parque Kitty Fernández. Este es el espacio público más grande de la ciudad. Si observan el huellaje real y se enfrenta a la calle principal. Estuvo incluido en el plan de masterplan como un espacio underutilizado con potencial despeinado. Y había mucho emoción en todas nuestras conversaciones al respecto del impacto que este espacio podría tener. Sobrepasar, había mucho apoyo para más greening de Kitty Fernández, más estacionamiento y más características para niños y jóvenes. En términos de encontrar caminos, esto fue visto en diferentes ubicaciones y para diferentes tipos de señal. Directional y en términos de saber que hay una calle histórica o una ciudad histórica si giras a la izquierda o, ya saben, dos bloques de aquí hay una biblioteca pública. Signos informativos, una idea circulaba que en realidad surgió durante la iniciativa de la recuperación de la costa. El equipo Vibrant habló de esto. Donde podríamos tener QR codes en edificios o estructuras históricas que proveen más contexto y riqueza para los visitantes e incluso los residentes. Y luego, por supuesto, puertas marcando una experiencia de llegada. De hecho, algunos miembros de Beautification estaban hablando de que había un arco justo en esa intersección de Stone Pine y Tom &amp; Pete's. Y en visitar K H &amp; B Radio, hay una imagen de ello en ese edificio. En la urbanización y el paisaje, había un consenso por materiales orgánicos y características con tonos y colores terrenales calientes. Para el paisaje, había un deseo por más plantas costales nativas y césped resistente al derrame, pero más flores vibrantes de color. Así que este fue un resumen de conceptos muy alto que se refinará y desarrollará en los próximos meses. Y habrá un memoría de resumen del taller de diseño en nuestro sitio web la próxima semana. Y también cubrirá más detalles de los que he tocado. And it will also cover more details that I touched on tonight and some key takeaways that we heard from the community throughout this charrette process in September and October. I'm happy to take any questions or comments. And we also have Cindy Zirker, the principal from Tool Design, on the horn if anybody has any questions.
I don't think so. It was a wonderful presentation. Thank you for keeping us up to date on what's going on.
Thank you.
It's exciting.
Next up, I believe we have an update on the 880 Stone Pine Housing Development Project from our Assistant City Manager, John Doughty.
Thank you, John Doughty, Assistant City Manager. Next, what I'd like to just give the community and the council an update is work that's being done to look at traffic calming on Stone Pine Road. This has been a consistent theme through conversations prior to any even identification as a site for an affordable housing project as concerns and issues. And I know you have heard from your constituents over the years regarding this. We have made some revisions, but this proposes some new modifications. And this is also something that has been vetted through with civil engineer on the project itself, with the traffic engineering firm, DKS, as well as working with MOZ and the Public Works staff. So I'll just walk you through quickly the basic premise. The main big focus here, which has been something that has been identified again and raised, is enhancing and providing for more protection at the crosswalk here. Our traffic calming plan includes now a proposed flashing beacon crosswalk here, much like what you've seen in other areas.
Hey, John, would you mind moving a little bit over in front of the mic? Your voice is coming in and out on it. Sorry.
I've never had that problem before. So, and thanks. So this would be, at this point, a flashing beacon crosswalk at this location. This would include also trimming back of vegetation to improve visibility. A lot of the concerns and issues have been raised around this corner. And so that's a big piece. Followed by at Patrick is a second new crosswalk. And if you've been out there any time, you'll see that, basically, there is no crossing to this point. And there is no sidewalk along Stone Pine here. So this would provide a safe crosswalk at that point. From the perspective of what we heard from the community and from particularly those neighbors, but also from the community in general, there was a desire not to have any kind of speed undulations, humps, bumps, whatever you want to call them, there's various configurations, in part because of the issues of trucks and vehicles going there. Obviously, you've got the post office with trucks going, as well as our own sometimes trucks heading to and from the corporation yard. So what we have looked at is several means to address that. You'll see the yellow lines on this faintly. What we're looking at is basically striping along and narrowing the perceived and real sort of lanes there, which will naturally slow people down a bit. We are also looking at two... Two points on my... What's going on? My pointer's sort of working. You'll see right in the middle of the screen is the speed feedback signage. So those will be pointed at each east and the west direction, providing feedback as to how fast you're driving, and in essence, say, slow down. And then finally, there would be also signage, striping, and configure it for the sharos, the shared access for bicycles as well. So this is sort of a combination of mechanisms to try to slow down traffic and to provide that feedback and to provide safe harbor for those trying to cross. If you go to the next one, thanks. So this is just a little more information in terms of what that Easterly crosswalk point would be at Patrick. So it would be a high-visibility crossing with signage as well and additional lighting. So part of the concerns there have been is you can't see at that point. So this would include some additional expanded lighting improvements so people could see that crosswalk in better shape. So again, this is what we are contemplating at this point, moving forward with. And just wanted to make that available to the community. We will be posting this onto the website, to the project page, so anybody who wants to look at it in more detail can do so. And obviously, and as it continues to be, we're happy to answer any questions that the community has regarding these improvements. Thank you.
John, can you explain what a flashing beacon crosswalk is?
Sure, that's similar to what you find in several locations. Pillar Citos, the one right out here at the mid-block crosswalk, right out at Cali Avenue going to the Events Center. So those are, press the button, the flashers go off, the big signs, and alert you that somebody is in the crosswalk and ready to walk and go across.
Great, thanks. Council, any questions?
What's a sharo?
Those are the painted messages that say, that has the bicycle on it. They've created this terminology. It's share the road, and it's become sharo, sharo. But it's basically the bicycle painted on there that says that you're looking to also be, as you're a driver, you're looking for bicycles on that road as well. And we painted those recently on Johnston Street in particular. If you want to see those, those are down Johnston Street as part of that concept as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. I think that's it. We appreciate it.
So I'll just do a quick reminder for the community that Thursday, this coming Thursday, November 9th, at 6:00 PM, we will be having our annual Veterans' Eve event. And we hope that folks will turn out and honor those that have served and have a good time. And we have the scout troop doing the honor guard, and we're excited about that. And there will be some treats there, as we always have for every event. So hope to see you and hope to see the community out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we move on to public forum. We welcome speakers providing public comment. But please be advised, this is a limited public forum. As such, speakers must stay on topic if speaking to a particular agenda item. And if speaking during general public comment, they must address matters within the subject-matter jurisdiction of the city. If speakers fail to follow these rules or use profane language, they will be warned. And if they continue to disregard our rules, their opportunity to speak will be ended. Thank you. We next move on to public forum. And I would say, if anyone is here to speak about rent control, please hold off until you get to item 3B. You had a hand raised? No? Okay. Our first speaker is Carolina Carvajal.
Muy buenas noches a todos.
Good evening, everyone. So I just wanted to comment on what Matthew has already been saying. So I live by Pillar Cito's street. And as part of the community. And also from my neighbors' voices. I just want to talk to you all about what you already know. So in that sector of the community, we are all going through this very critical moment. And I know that the sheriff, or the meeting that the sheriff had this Monday. I know Joaquin was here. And Mr. Harvey. And they were able to observe that the community is concerned. So I want to communicate to those that weren't able to make it. That the majority of the neighbors voted. So we can have some security cameras. Brighten it up, more lights. And more patrolling. You know that our sector or part of town has been an area that has been more frequented by gangs. But in this case, I think the community is, in fact, saying that they want to change. So we want to ask, and we also want to say that we agree to have those changes in our part of town. And we also want to support you all in making those changes. Because the community, our neighbors, are all in agreement. And so I also wanted to thank you because, yes, I have seen some change. I saw that the trees were trimmed down because they were blocking the light. So we continue to wait to have some more positive change. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolina. Next, we have Kristelin Geet from the Coastside Chamber.
Thank you very much, Kristelin from the Coastside Chamber. Thank you. And I just wanted to let everybody know, and I know it's early, please don't groan at me because it's before Thanksgiving. But Nights of Lights is coming, so get ready. It's going to be four nights. It's going to start the day after Thanksgiving with our tree lighting at Mac Dutra Park. And you guys, we got four more feet on the tree. So we're just going to keep getting up there until we find out what max capacity is. So come, please come out, Mac Dutra, 6:00 PM. If you have lost a loved one this year, please visit our website and let us know. There's a little form you can fill out so that we can honor them at the tree lighting during the in memoriam service portion that we started last year. So it's totally free, and you can just let us know their details, and we'll put them in a book and memorialize them at the tree lighting. And then the following Friday, December 1st, will be the more traditional Nights of Lights night of the parade and block party. We've partnered with Make It Main Street, so there'll be all kinds of crafts and goodies. And then we've partnered with Sea Craft School, which will do a whole beautiful children's area. So bring your kids, and please plan on being on Main Street from 6:00 to 8:00 or 9:00, depending how long you want to party. And then, oh, and then we're adding this year that floats, boats, and cars that are in the parade actually get to come back around, hang out on Main Street, and it'll be a car show. So that'll be really fun. And then our friends at IDES are doing their holiday extravaganza the same night. So we encourage people to go up and down the street. The following Friday, on the 8th, we will have an ugly sweater party at the San Bonito House Cantina. So start crafting those babies now because we will have prizes for the ugliest of the ugly. And then lastly, on the 15th, we will be doing the second annual showing of the movie Elf, very family-friendly. This year, we're adding an It's Italia spaghetti feed. So come on down. It's only $10 if you want to have spaghetti. And then we'll have a prize if anybody actually eats a Buddy the Elf breakfast spaghetti. So please come on down and have fun. And we'll have all kinds of prizes and silliness. And we just want to spend the holidays with you. So the first four Fridays, starting the Friday after Thanksgiving, there'll be something to do on Main Street. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristelin. Next, we have Lucio Avila. Okay, that is also... Lourdes Patinas.
That's me.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Lourdes Patino. So I was walking by the bridge today. And I did see that they were working cutting down the trees. And so I've seen a couple of days already that the PG&E or the electricity company has been there a couple of times. And so I'm very grateful because, yes, you have listened to us. Thank you very much, from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Lourdes. And now we have some speakers from our Zoom.
Yes, first we have Linda, whenever you're ready, Linda.
Hi, I'm Linda Goldstein, and you've heard me speak. I'm from Faith in Action and Coastside Jewish Community and the Articles Curator for the Immigrant Advocacy Group. But what you probably don't know about me is that I'm a marriage and family therapist. And I have been so for 30 years. And I'm extremely concerned about rental protections and children being affected. Can you hear me?
Linda, if you are speaking about 3B, our rent control, that's not, this is not discussed at public forum. You'll have to wait till that item comes up.
Is rental protections and rental control...
Yes, that's the same. You need to wait.
Okay, then I will wait.
Thank you very much.
Okay, next up, we have Kirsten, as long as this is pertaining public forum.
Hi, yes, this is pertaining to the traffic calming on Stone Pine. I'm resident of Stone Pine and Patrick Way. And I have to say, I feel extremely gaslit by what you've just presented. So first of all, as Matt knows from the emails and complaints that we have filed with him, is that, first of all, the city doesn't have their own contractors who are going in and out of Stone Pine Yard under control in terms of speeding and reckless behavior on Stone Pine. So traffic calming measures might start with this city getting contractors under control, up and down at all times of day, starting as early as 5:00 AM into Stone Pine Yard, endangering the people who are walking that have some old dress trying to just walk down Stone Pine Road. Second, I don't understand where the second crosswalk is going to. There is no second side walk. Third, the vehicles that are coming out of the yard, and again, my office is facing right to Stone Pine and the yard, are huge. I have no idea where you think you're going to be putting a bike lane with the type of vehicles that these days are going in and out of the city yard. Next question would be, the residents of Cypress Cove have already paid with the HRE dues and other fees that they're paying for trimming of trees. Is, and trimming of trees was mentioned on Stone Pine. Is this something that actually is going to be actually, you know, charged to the residents of Stone Pine or Cypress Cove, sorry, again? Or is this something that the city this time will pay for because the vehicles that are going in and out of the yard are increasingly getting bigger and bigger? So I'm not willing as a resident to keep paying for all of this just for traffic coming, you know, ideas on Stone Pine. The problem with the crosswalk is that it is behind a blind curb that when customers from the coast office, customers out of the Stone Pine public center as well as the city contractor coming by Stone Pine, going towards Main Street, not coming from Main Street, going towards Main Street, but coming around a blind curb and they're going in high speed and we observe it every day, every day. Particularly if the contractors coming in the public, it's just one of them, our trash pickup goes. They're like absolutely ignoring speed limits on Stone Pine at all times. So how are these guys supposed to be, what is the difference in putting slapping signs on the crosswalks than what is already there? The crosswalk is in the wrong space, the blind curb is a problem, speed limits are not observed, neither are the signs observed, but this is not an outlet to remedy too. I cannot tell you how much impact we have, you know, every vehicle are knocking down, turning around, noiseily in at the Stone Pine end because people think that this is an outlet for some reason because Apple Maps is showing and the rearview mirror is, the business tree. Nobody is observing these sounds, so I totally get that.
Thank you, Kristen.
Mayor, we have no more public comments online.
A, that's it for public forum. We move on to consent calendar. Does any council member wish to pull something from the consent calendar? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
Yes, I move that we adopt the consent calendar, items 1A, waive reading of resolutions and ordinances. Item 1B, an ordinance amending Title 13 Water and Sewage by adding Chapter 13.22, fats, oil, grease, and sand to the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code, second reading. Item 1C, final acceptance of the Main Street Safety Improvements Project. And item 1D, final acceptance of the Corporation Yard Improvements Project. Do you get a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. I don't believe we have any ordinances or public hearings this evening, so we move on to item 3, Resolutions and Staff Reports, and we'll start with 3A, Professional Services Agreement with Job Train.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Karen Decker will do this presentation for us and turn the time over to her. It looks like she's being joined by Erica Wood.
Good evening, Karen Decker, Economic and Community Vitality Manager with the city. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening, and I'm joined by our Economic Development Consultant, Erica Wood. We're here this evening to provide an update on the Opportunity Center of the Coastside and to recommend executing a professional services agreement for employment services and to go forward with a request for qualifications to retain a qualified entity to operate a new business incubator. Here you see a photo of the new home of the Opportunity Center. Is it not advancing? Oh. Oh, great, thank you. Here you see a photo of the new home of the Opportunity Center at 637 Main Street. The Opportunity Center's purpose is to provide support to job seekers and to small businesses and to entrepreneurs. This is a one-stop shop with co-located services that will be operated by our local Chamber of Commerce. It's an ideal downtown location, which is part of the reason why we're so excited about this in particular. It's within walking distance to complimentary services, it's accessible by public transit, and our hope is that these services will really help reactivate that 600 block of Main. You know, I had the pleasure of going to the ribbon cutting for Blue Dragon FAW on Friday, also located on that block, and so great things are happening. Here you see a graphic that is meant to be illustrative. This is in regards to the space planning and how we're sort of envisioning these services. So on the left, you have Suite A, which is where the business incubator will be located. In the middle there, in Suite B, we have a really large classroom and a community kitchen. And then in Suite C, we have the Chamber and two nonprofits that will providing, will be providing the job seeker and small business development support services. We really want this to be a state-of-the-art space that is welcoming. You want someone to feel like, I like it here, I can get resources, I can get help with my business or help finding a job. We're designing a space that is intended to be flexible and to feel modern. It has coworking spaces, it has hybrid-enabled meeting rooms. We are working really closely with our architect to incorporate these principles into the design.
Thanks, Karen. Good evening, council and community. Happy to be here. This is an at-a-glance view of our progress to date with the Opportunity Center. I'll start with saying I think it's important to note that the city received its first payment from the $2.5 million in June. And in just four months, we have a facility, we have a signed lease agreement, tenant improvement are beginning, and we have executed contracts with wonderful service providers like the Chamber and Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center. As a reminder, Renaissance Entrepreneurship Center will provide the critical support to our small businesses. They really specialize in immigrant-owned small businesses, and they'll provide training and support, which we are incredibly, incredibly excited about. Karen mentioned Job Train. We're also excited to have identified them as best-in-class nonprofit. They made the 2023 Great Nonprofits List. That's a high bar. And they've been really involved in providing support and services at similar economic advancement centers in South San Francisco and North Fair Oaks and have the ability to collaborate and partner with Renaissance. You know, we were really impressed with the conversations that we've had with them and their very thoughtful approach to taking time to understand what makes the Coastside unique, some of our specific challenges, and how best to tailor programs to meet our needs. They really have a proven track record of helping unemployed and underemployed turn their lives around and the ability to help them climb the economic ladder. The proposed workforce development program that they are offering includes assistance with rapid employment services as well as career training, upskilling in high-demand industries like construction, healthcare, and technology, to name a few. And you'll see here, the last point is what they've proposed in terms of outcome and likely impact, that they will at least touch 110 people with some type of service. Of those 110 people, 66 will go on to opt for specific job placement support, and 60% of those will end up with jobs, or 40 individuals making a living wage. So we're confident that they will be able to be a real value add to us. The other aspect and effort that will be housed within the Opportunity Center is the Coastside Incubator. You know, why an incubator? An incubator is really intended to help spur needed innovation, build our entrepreneurship capacity, and help it create local jobs, most importantly. They are the entities that provide that really critical, early-stage support to startups and entrepreneurs as they take viable ideas to market. They're not new. It's not a new strategy. There are many incubators and accelerators across the United States. But we believe we have an opportunity to do something really unique. And one of the things that we think will set our Coastside Incubator apart is our extraordinary coastal environment and our natural resources that will offer startups an opportunity to really focus in on climate resiliency and ideas and jobs in that sector. Imagine what happens when climate disasters strike. Power goes down, electricity goes out, communication systems are a mess. We've certainly experienced that here on the coast. What if we could replace a fossil-fueled generator with a solar-powered nanogrid? That would be a more mobile, a more sustainable, and easy-to-use climate solution. What if we could help replicate and scale regenerative kelp farming to create jobs and restore the health of our ocean? So these are some of the things that are possible with the business incubator and possibilities that bring benefits as it relates to the economy, the environment, and social benefits, too. I will say, stepping back and thinking about all 15 recommendations that Karen and I have been working on with this council's leadership and support, the incubator has seemed to be the most complex and daunting, and I feel like it is in our line of sights in a way that has never been true before. And that's because of some real recent momentum. We have heard from potential advisors, potential startups that want to join with us, and there are a lot of funding opportunities to go after. So with that, I'll let Karen repeat our recommendations.
So we're here this evening to ask council to authorize staff to move forward with a professional services agreement with Job Train in the amount of $337,000, in addition to releasing a request for qualifications to bring on that qualified entity to help launch the business incubator.
Council, do you have comments or questions? I have a couple of things, oh, okay, that I wanted to say. One was, I want to make sure when we're talking about job training, we are talking about training people to work on the coast, especially in Half Moon Bay, but on the coast in general. And that our focus is not to train people and then send them over the hill for jobs. And it sounds like that's what you're aiming at. The second thing that I wanted to remark on was, is gone from my head right now. Oh, yes, and that was, this is a county and city and Chamber of Commerce cooperative. We're all working together for the same thing. So I am hoping that we are working with the entire Coastside. I like the idea of kelp farming, those, you know, those ideas. We need to be including the Harbor District. We need to be talking to people in Pescadero and San Gregorio. So this is all very exciting.
Here, here.
Robert?
Just a quick comment and question. Maybe the rest of council can help me remember. I think it was last session, we had a report out on that fiber optic project for mid-coast, and the guy's name is Richard, no. Greg, sorry.
Greg Dieges.
Right. I remember he was saying, you know, they were sussing it out, and it was kind of expensive. I'm thinking maybe for the incubator, if we could get some expertise, because a lot of it is the expense of laying the fiber optics. And I know some other small towns have actually done it themselves. But anyway, I thought that might be an interesting connection. Maybe get Greg to explore that with the incubator and bring in some other experts and figure out, maybe we can do this ourselves if you can get some help with an incubator. So just something to put on our radar screen, because, boy, could we use some fiber optics as an alternative? So, yeah, just wanted to connect the dot. Thanks.
Great thinking. Can I have a motion, then?
Just confirming, mayor, was there any public comment on this item?
Thank you, Catherine. You remind me of that every time I'm up here at the dais. I forget it every time. Thank you. Do we have any public comment?
We have no online speakers, mayor.
And I see no one in the audience, so now may I entertain a motion?
Sure. I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a professional service agreement with Job Train in an amount not to exceed $337,000 for a term beginning November 1st, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024. And two, develop and release an RFQ to identify and retain a qualified entity to launch and operate an incubator to be located at the Opportunity Center of the Coastside for an amount not to exceed $200,000.
Second.
May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Raabach?
Yes.
Councilmember Ruddick?
Yes.
Councilmember Brownstone?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jimenez?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. This is very exciting. Okay, we're gonna take a five-minute break, and I'm gonna limit it to five minutes. We need to be back here at 8:15, and we will hear item 3B. Questions, Action Plan, Work Session.
Thank you, mayor, council members and community. John Doughty, Assistant City Manager, and with me is Mike Noche, your housing specialist there. And we're here to present as succinctly and simply as we possibly can a very complex item, which is a package that is a policy conversation regarding tenant protections, which includes the potential of rent control, tenant protections themselves, potentially rent space control of mobile homes, and also addressing potentially code enforcement-related relocation assistance. So it's a complex issue. We'll try to be as succinct as we can and allow you and the community to get into the dialogue. What we are recommending for process is that we will do a brief presentation with Mike doing that. And what we would suggest is we follow the normal routine of clarifying questions by the council, community input, community comment. And then what we would suggest is allowing us to sort of work with you through kind of each of the questions and to try to find a consensus point on basically the four primary decision points we're dealing with, which have subpieces to each one of those. What we will also... What we will also say is that clearly in the, throughout this process, we understand that there are a lot of potential things that can be included within any number of these ordinances. We recommend that you, and frankly, the community and their comments, hopefully maybe focus primarily on the bigger policy question and issues. And those will then drive what happens beyond that point where we can then engage in a more detailed conversation about what all those potential iterations of any given piece of legislation that you ask for, any ordinance that you may wish to proceed with. But that's just guidance, and the council's prerogative to choose how you wish to go. But that is what we would suggest is probably the easiest. And this is kind of similar to the process that we got through the electrification process, in particular, was sort of that deliberative process. So with that, I will hand it over to Mike, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and good evening, Mayor, and city council members. Again, Mike Noche, Housing Coordinator. Appreciate the introduction. And we'll go ahead and get started. Before we get into those four distinct areas for your council consideration this evening, I'm going to provide some background about our rental housing stock. Excuse me. So total amount of housing units that we have within the city of Half Moon Bay, we have 5,098 units. Twenty-eight percent of those units are renter-occupied. And of the, which twenty-eight percent is equivalent to 1427, as you see there, that rental unit breakdown, roughly 400 are affordable, deed-restricted. So they are protected, typically have lengthy deed restrictions between 30 to 55 years. Limited rents already in, exist for those units. We also have roughly, our estimate is around 627 single-family homes and condos. And those, that's an important number to call out, and I'll get into that in more detail. That leaves us with around 400 multifamily units. And we'll interchangeably use the term multifamily. It means any unit with two or more units on that property is often referred to as a duplex, triplex, and so forth. So you'll hear multifamily units referenced throughout the conversation. I also wanted to make it clear that the city's jurisdiction is only within its boundaries. Anything beyond the city's jurisdiction would be handled at the county level on incorporated regional coastside level. So anything that the council decides on would be within the city boundaries, as shown here on the map. And I'll mention, you know, locations like El Granada, Moon Ridge, Montero, Moss Beach. Any areas to the south of town would be outside of our jurisdiction. I also want to acknowledge that part of the city's commitment to affordable housing and providing housing security is, goes into great detail in our Housing Element update, which we are working very closely with the state to certify very soon. That number in the Housing Element, our goal for our eight-year cycle that's currently in process is 480 units. We plan for more than that, as required by state law, to have a buffer. And we have many sites that are listed in the Housing Element, but I wanted to share with the public and those listening this evening that more information on the Housing Element specifically is available on the city's website, hnbcity.com/housingelement. I'll also make a note that the development of these new units, they are weighted toward lower-income units. So that is a requirement as well. So we'll now segue into some conversation about rent control. And I've got a couple of options. And this portion of the presentation not, isn't meant to be, go into great detail on the exact provisions of some of these current existing laws, but really meant to point out some key aspects of these current laws that are in place. So the first of those laws is the Tenant Protection Act. It's a state law, which was enacted, as you can see, in 2019. The key aspects of this law is there are, excuse me, there are rent increase limits that are incorporated into this law, pretty much between 5% and 10% lately, with the Consumer Price Index being so high. We've seen increases essentially can be no greater than 9%, or, excuse me, 10% being the maximum. Only certain types of units, as you'll see here on the screen, are included in that state law. So single-family homes, condos, if a duplex has an owner living in one of the units, they are exempt. There is also a 15-year, any building that has been built within the last 15 years would be exempt. So going into 2024, anything built after 2009 would be exempt from the Tenant Protection Act. So pretty much what is included are multifamily buildings, so two or more units built prior to 2009. And then I'll also mention, we do have information about the Tenant Protection Act on our website because it is an existing law. And this is one of the options if, and I'll get into this in more detail. But if council were to enact a city-level ordinance on rent control and veer toward the Tenant Protection Act, that would essentially make the city the enforcement mechanism. Whereas right now, it's a state level and would be handled privately through legal organizations for a tenant. So moving on to the Costa-Hawkins rent control. So this was enacted in 1995. And similarly to the Tenant Protection Act of 2019, it has some similarities in regards to the units that are included, as you'll see here. Single-family homes and condos, regardless of age, are exempt. So this does not have the duplex with the primary owner provision included. And then pretty much any multifamily building built prior to 1995 would be able to be included if a local jurisdiction enacted a rent control ordinance that was aligned with Costa-Hawkins. So we cannot violate Costa-Hawkins. It is a state law. So any rent control that is enacted at a local level has to fall within these constraints, essentially. The, another important thing to note about Costa-Hawkins is whereas the Tenant Protection Act maxes the rent increases at about 10%, many jurisdictions that go the route of the Costa-Hawkins rent control, including buildings, you know, built prior to 1995 only, usually have a more restrictive rent increase percentage. So typically between 3% and 5%. So considerations between those two options are before council for discussion this evening. As I highlighted briefly, there's two essentially models that council could consider, which would be currently what's existing under state law, which is a privately enforced, so it's not necessarily enforced by the city. It's up to a tenant to bring legal action against their landlord if they felt like they were being mistreated or had a unlawful rent increase or eviction under current law. If the city were to enact a rent control, we could choose to become the enforcement authority, essentially. And then we would take it upon ourselves to review cases and so forth and issue citations. We can get into more details there. Both options regulate annual increases, and they still allow for existing protections to remain in place. Neither option requires rent reduction. So I wanted to make that clear, that rent control would not create a situation where landlords are required to reduce their rents. They can continue to rent their units at the same level that they're offering them at. They would just limit the increases that happen annually. It's also important to note, I mentioned there's roughly 400 multifamily units in the city. Our estimate is that some of those units may not qualify if, depending on the options, based on owner, an owner living in, say, a duplex or other provisions that maybe would disqualify a unit from being included in a specific option. So 350 units is our rough estimate of what potential rent control measures would include. And those are all multifamily units. The options where the city is taking on the authority to pursue violations, there would be expected administrative costs. And we go into detail in the staff report on potential estimates. I think we were ballparking around $250,000 or $300,000 for the first year for implementation and an operating budget of roughly $150,000 needed if the city were to take on that responsibility. And then I'll segue here into rental protections in a second. But I also want to mention that potential city involvement could include licensing or registration for all rentals. And this would be pretty much a key data collection standpoint on knowing how many rentals and what they're being offered at. And I believe, if I'm not misspeaking, you could include single-family homes in that registration. Potentially, we'd have to look into that further, but that could be an option that's in front of council as well. So the two first bullet points here that are listed under tenant protections, these are existing tenant protections that I want to make sure I'm clear that these are existing. They have passed or are there for tenants and landlords' benefit. The Tenant Protection Act of 2019, as I mentioned, so I won't reiterate that. But I also wanted to highlight that Half Moon Bay passed the residential rental security measures. That information is on our website at hnbcity.com/housing. The city's rental security measures include a 12-month lease requirement as well as potential landlord and tenant mediation. Additional tenant protections that council could consider adding would be increased relocation payments for a no-fault eviction. So that's a situation where the tenant did not create a situation where they were liable for the fault or at fault for the eviction. Some jurisdictions set a dollar amount, others set a additional, tack-on additional months of rent payment that would be paid to the tenant in certain situations. A subtenant tenancy regulations, that is something that's a little more specific to some of the needs we've heard from the community in regards to home sharing and overcrowding situations. So we could go into more detail there if council wishes or pursue that further. And then potential anti-discrimination ordinance as well. I won't spend too much time on the next two, but I want to just highlight them briefly. The mobile home space rent control. This would be applicable to Kenyatta Cove and Hilltop Mobile Home Parks. The county does have a mobile home space rent control ordinance in place that was attached to the staff report this evening. That, again, is only applicable to unincorporated areas. So it does not include the two mobile home parks that were within Half Moon Bay. And that would limit the space rent. And space rent is roughly between $600 to $1,200 per month at different locations from what we gathered. The code enforcement-related relocation assistance, this would come into play when a unit is not properly maintained and the city has to take action in a situation where it is not safe to occupy a unit. It would make the, potentially make a landlord liable for relocation assistance should a tenant have to move out of a unit. So that is for council's consideration as well and would provide some financial support to renters. So with that, I will turn it back to council, unless there's anything John would like to add, for clarifying questions. Thank you.
Council, do we have any clarifying questions? Yes.
Can you define what a subtenancy is? And could we ban them?
Yeah, I can start. So our understanding of why the subtenancy is so popular, I'll say, or used so much is that we don't have enough housing stock to how.
Let me answer the first question, was pretty direct. What is, what is subtenancy? And we've used subtenancy and room share, house share, kind of interchangeably. What we're defining it generally for the purposes of this conversation is if you choose to pay money to rent a portion of a home, meaning a bedroom or whatever in that place, and you've basically created it. And there is either a property owner who is doing so or there is a primary tenant who has leased or rented the entire home and is basically allowing and taking rent from other folks who are taking bits and pieces of that property. Some of those, and one of the concerns we've identified, is that we hear, and, you know, again, some of it's anecdotal, but we have to believe that some of it is true, is that folks aren't being offered all access to the home, for example, to kitchens is one area that we're concerned about, which means that people are having to potentially have hot pots and hot plates and all of those things in the rooms, which were not designed for ventilation, for electrical, you know, surcharging on those types of things. And so those are some of the bigger pieces and questions, too, with that. And then also, you know, we have, again, anecdotally heard of folks who are, who are charging probably more than what they're actually paying as the master tenant for a home for rent. So some are making income off of those situations.
So they're arbitraging the situations, basically. Can we control subtenancies? Is that possible?
I would probably defer to Catherine. Let's see what she says, and then we'll go from there, if you want.
All right. So I haven't researched this question. I will say it raises some property rights questions in my mind about completely banning the ability to sublease. That said, we are aware of at least one jurisdiction, city of San Francisco, that does regulate subleases, prohibiting tenants from subleasing for more than they are, you know, leasing themselves.
I would only add that from the staff perspective, nothing that we have put on paper or to this was an idea of trying to remove the subtenancies because what we have heard over and over is that subtenancy, room sharing, home sharing, whatever we're, want to categorize it, is a significant piece of the affordable housing rental equation. So I think our perspective as staff has been, let's figure out a way to make it work for everyone a little better if that's the, if that's what you choose as council to do so. But that was not our intention, and I know that's not what you were suggesting.
It just seems like that's an area of abuse, and you've already identified that. And people out in the audience have identified it as a, as a place of abuse. It seems like, if we could take a closer look at that. And then, does the county have rent control?
No.
Any other council members with clarifying questions? Yes, Councilmember Brownstone.
Regarding the $150,000 to $200,000 administrative costs of starting up, and I was looking in the staff report. So some areas raise some of that money by fees, administrative fees, right? fees, right? So if we had 350 potential units, that would be covered, right? I think is what the number you put up a moment ago.
We were, what, it is, it is commonplace that, that these become a user fee under, under state law, and under the user fee, you can charge what it takes to administer and manage and deal with a, a program that, that the government undertakes, and that would where this, is where this would fall. So the answer is, is that it's pretty commonplace that the, that, that property owners are responsible for paying for their fair share, in essence, of, of what those costs are to administer.
And what would be a typical fee range, would you say, that from what, I don't know if you researched that piece, but.
Before you answer, we're just to hear from the audience. It's a little hard to hear, so if everybody can speak much more directly into the mics, please.
In terms of a reasonable fee charged to the owner of a unit, rental, rental unit, what would that average, would you say?
The, the challenge, I'll say, is, is what's, one, reasonable is in the eye of the beholder and the, and the person being asked to pay. What we, all, what we're suggesting is, is that if there is a program and a cost, that cost be borne by those who are participating with it. That being said, it really varies. For example, I'll, I'll, I'll put Alameda out there. Their, their fee is around $180 per unit.
Per unit?
Per unit. And it actually is split equally between the, the tenant and the landlord under, property owner, under, under their provisions.
Annually?
But annually, annually. And they have, but they have 14,000 units, so their, their program is a two-and-a-half million-dollar program. So we can't get the economy of scale that, that kind of program.
And maybe, or maybe it'd be a percentage of rent per unit or total building per unit, something like that, right? Okay, that's good enough to answer my question. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yeah, I wanted to find out a little bit more about the number of available units that we can talk about for either TPA or Cresta Hawkins. And you came up with a figure of 350. Is that correct? These are units, correct? They're not 350 individual. They're 350 units. That could be a eight-room unit or it could be a single room.
Correct.
Correct?
So these are, these are 350 units which can be, which are configured either in a duplex, triplex, fourplex, or multiplex, five or more units.
Right.
Those are the total unit counts.
Right. So if you put a family of four into a single unit, then you're talking about four times 350 or 1,400 people, souls. If you put two families of four into a single unit, which is the story that we've heard, happens a lot, then you're talking about 2,800 people. So we're talking about a significant percentage of the population of Half Moon Bay, which is 12,000. Okay, that was, that was my question. Thank you. Okay, with no more clarifying questions, I think we can move on to public forum. Our first speaker is Rosio Avila.
Rosio is going to provide all of her comments, and then I'll go ahead and do what's, what's a site translation and what's written down.
Buenos noches, miembros del Consilio. Mi nombre es Rosio Avila. Trabajo como campesina, promotora comunitaria. Mi esposo trabaja en la jardinería, agricultura y en lo que encuentra. Half Moon Bay necesita de nuestros servicios, servicios esenciales en la comunidad, pero el pago es muy bajo en estos trabajos. Es por eso mismo la situación nos ha arrinconado de una manera que no, que nos da las condiciones para poder vivir en Half Moon Bay de manera saludable. Para que ustedes puedan vivir bien, nosotros nos sacrificamos mucho. El que nosotros podamos vivir de manera digna depende de ustedes. Estamos contando con su decisión. Política para que haya un control de la renta y se abran más lugares para que nuestras hijas e hijos puedan crecer en un ambiente digno.
Good evening, all members of the council. My name is Rosio Avila, and I work as a farmworker and a community promoter. My husband works in the gardens, landscaping, agriculture, and whatever it is that he can find. Half Moon Bay needs our services, our essential services within the community, but the pay is very low and for these jobs. And that's why the situation has kind of backed us up into a corner in a way that we don't have the conditions to be able to live in Half Moon Bay in a healthy way. So in order for people to live well, we have sacrificed much, and, and the way that we can live in a dignified manner depends on you all. We are counting on your decision, your political decision, that to have this rent control and open up more places so that our daughters and our sons can live in a dignified environment. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosio. Next, we have Lourdes Patinas.
You already know me. My name is Lourdes Patino. And I'm here to see if you guys can help us with rent control. Because rents are very high and we get paid very little. And that's why we, at times, live with other people so that we can pay the rent because it's very high. So I'm here to see if you can help us out to have some kind of rent control. And thank you very much. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much for listening. And so we, we wait for your assistance and to have some kind of control. Thank you.
Thank you, Lourdes. Next, we have Vance Verderami.
Good evening, council members. My name is Vance Verderami, operating manager for Kenyatta Cove Mobile Home Park. My dad, Jack Verderami, built this community. First phase completed back in 1972. Kenyatta Cove has been family-owned and operated for over 50 years. Family-owned and operated business for over 50 years. I was 12 years old when I attended the city council's approval meeting, then went on to work in construction, digging the utility trenches, shooting grade for the street construction with my dad on the tractor. I sold my first mobile home to the first customer I ever had when I was still in high school. I have sold homes here full-time since 1983, when the final phase was completed. Kenyatta Cove maintains all infrastructure, including streets, gas lines, sewer lines, all electrical transmission. In addition, Kenyatta Cove maintains the clubhouse, pool, fitness center, all landscaped common areas, and walking trails. This is included in the homeowner's space rent. Homes sell in a timely fashion and have appreciated in value year after year. This proves a rent stabilization program already exists here. Our 20-year lease limits annual space rent adjustments between 3% and 6% based on the published CPI index ending August 31 for the greater Bay Area. While thinking the city's involvement may seem like the right thing to do, there will be unintended consequences that will upset a very fine balance we've achieved here. The city will be burdened with unnecessary admin and legal costs year after year if a rent control ordinance is adopted, straining the budget further, taking away from other much-needed city projects. Let the free market work. If we are unable to keep up with inflation, Kenyatta Cove maintenance and amenities will suffer and lower our residents' home values. If buyer and seller understand and acknowledge the 20-year lease agreement and the homes continue to go up in value, why would we need an extra layer of government intervention? Does the city want to get in the mobile home park business? I'm hopeful you will be thorough during the investigative research process, and I welcome a meeting with each of you to discuss further. Thank you.
Thank you, Vance. Next up, we have Carolina Carvahal.
As you all know, this has been a constant struggle. And so the people are asking for a solution. So speaking technically about things that Mike has already explained to us. He indicates that there's 5,098 houses. And so 1,427 are designated for rentals. So in Half Moon Bay, there's 12,000 people. According to the 2020 census. I think there's a huge need for housing. Because I heard Ms. Debbie mentioning about how could that be possible? So the problem is, is we live like this, and a lot of people take advantage of it. Because there's, there's just isn't any more homes to rent. We don't have the prerequisites to rent a dignified housing. And aside from that, we don't have enough money to be able to pay for it. And so to even consider or think about that we're going to purchase a home is even more kind of out of, out of the park. So Half Moon Bay was founded as a farmworker community. But we're talking many years ago. And now it's a rich folk town. And not just anybody can live here. So somebody who has a house has, you know, has a lot of money. So poor folks like us. We just can't do it, even though we work a lot. It saddens me that some people are just concerned about the money, like where are we going to get that money? Where's it going to come out from? We're, you know, we're all involved in this. Immigrant people also pay taxes. So undocumented people also pay taxes. So they're not thinking that when they're kind of older, they're not going to get any of that. They're not thinking that all of that is going to remain here for you all. When instead, we ought to be worried about how our youth are growing up and living. So that youth born out of the Latinos here. Will be the future of your country. Because these old immigrants. Are going back to their country to die. Because we don't have any more strength. Because we don't have anything to sustain us when we're older. So in the meantime, I think rent control. In these few homes we have. Is important. Because we don't have the luxury. To have, you know, a kid in their own room. So we live a family of four in one room. That's our reality. But we're working for you all. For your country. And we want this to get better. We're, we're not asking for free stuff. Something just where we can afford. And in the meantime. A good thing would be rent control. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Carolina. Next, we have Fernando Peña.
Good evening, Mayor Penrose and members of the city council. That's a tough act to follow. I'm very appreciative of Mrs. Carvahal's very impassioned plea. I came here tonight to talk about rent control, obviously, and I'm here on behalf of the San Mateo County Association of Realtors and in opposition to the tenant protections plan. Not so much because of that impassioned plea, but implementing and managing rent, rent control will strain the city's resources. The cost to the taxpayers are significant, starting at $300,000, and as you mentioned, annually 150 to 200,000. But that's not the most important thing, right? The most important thing is to take care of our immigrant community and our low-skilled and low-paid service workers. But we have to think creatively. We can't just keep blaming housing providers and landlords and realtors. That's not the way to govern. Rent control has many unforeseen negative consequences on small mom-and-pop housing providers, who are your neighbors, who are your constituents, including withdrawal of units possibly from the marketplace. Even though you're talking about only 350 units, there could be increased lawsuits and, of course, the impact of maintenance of the units themselves. And as we've talked about, AB 1482 and the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code, Chapter 7.70, already provide protections to our renters and housing providers here in Half Moon Bay. Adding another level of regulations on housing providers will be costly for them to administer. And there are already numerous resources available, available for both tenants and housing providers here in San Mateo County. I applaud the council for working so closely with San Mateo County. You've been very creative in coming up with housing for farmworkers. Let's continue that. Come up with creative solutions. It's a fact that we live in the fourth most expensive county in, in the nation, and we have nine, nine billionaires that live in San Mateo County. Why don't we approach some of those to come up with some type of rental assistance program? Why don't we approach some of those to come up with some type of rental assistance program or some creative solutions rather than continuing to blame housing providers? I urge the council to focus on its efforts on producing more housing instead of these misguided regulations that discourage much-needed housing and only creates more red tape, bureaucracy, confusion, and cost. None of these provisions add one unit of housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Fernando. Next, we have Elaine Gilbrek.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name's Elaine Gilbrek. I'm the Executive Officer of San Mateo County Association of Realtors, and I'm here to speak about one portion of the landlords, the housing providers, who we call the mom-and-pops, who have a big heart and really think about the tenants and want to help them and are following all the Tenant Protection Act ordinances that are already in place. Our concern is that some of them may want to just give up if there's more onerous protections on them, and they may want to sell the properties, who could potentially be purchased by businesspeople who don't have the heart for the tenants. So, in the efforts to try to help the tenants, you might want to consider that some of it may actually work towards hurting them by getting the good landlords out of the housing provider business. Thank you.
Thank you, Elaine. Next, we have Linda Croce Anderson. Croce. Or Crose. Can you pronounce it, please?
I'm happy to. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you today. Linda Crose Anderson from, I'm a local Realtor, and I'm also a director on the San Mateo County Association of Realtors and the California Association of Realtors. And what I would like to discuss today is my opposition to the Tenant Protection Action Plan. Many of our local landlords, as you've just recently heard, are mom-and-pops, and they run across all cultures. And these people are just, they're trying to create generational wealth for their children and their grandchildren. And they're doing their best with what they have. And if we impose these laws, how are they going to maintain their properties? And we're going to run into a complete blight on our beautiful coast. So, please, think about this and think about everybody concerned so that we can find some kind of solution that works for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Linda. Next, we have Tony Serrano.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I would like to speak in favor of rent control and rental protections. I want to emphasize the mental health of our community. Renters who are struggling to afford their housing are more likely to experience anxiety, depression, and stress. This is because they are constantly worried about whether they will be able to make their payment and avoid eviction. This stress can take a toll on their mental and physical health. Rent control can help to reduce this stress by stabilizing rental prices and making it more affordable for people to stay in their homes. This can give renters a sense of security and stability, which can improve their mental health. In addition, rent control can help to prevent displacement, which is another major factor that contributes to poor mental health. When people are forced to move because they can no longer afford their rent, they often lose their social connections and support systems. This can lead to feelings of isolation and loneliness, which can exacerbate mental health problems. For all of these reasons, rent control is a necessary policy to protect the mental health of our community members. It is a policy that can make a real difference in the lives of people who are struggling to afford their housing. I urge you to support rent control so that we can create a community where everyone has access to safe, affordable, and stable housing. Opponents will use scare tactics and often will argue the rent control stifles investments in rental properties, leading to deterioration and a decline in housing quality. However, empirical evidence suggests otherwise. Studies have shown that rent control does not discourage new construction or overall investment in the rental housing market. In fact, rent control can incentivize landlords to maintain their properties as they know they will have a stable stream of income from long-term tenants. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Next, we have Enrique Bazan.
Good evening, members of the council. I'm bringing 27 letters from community members who don't feel confident speaking in front of everyone, but would like to share their stories of why it's important to stabilize rent in Half Moon Bay. To give you an example, a woman says that she was expelled from her home along with her four minor children when her husband was seriously ill with terminal cancer. That family ended up on the streets and sleeping in a car. There are heartless people who do not care for the suffering of others. Please read the letters so that you know how urgent it is to move forward with the Tenant Protection Action Plan. And as a reflection on a personal note, I'm the father of two daughters. And sometimes they need attention if somebody's not doing well in school or if somebody's sick. Something happens that is in disadvantage for her own development. And paying attention to the person who is sick, it doesn't mean that I don't love the other one. It means that somebody needs urgent attention for her own development. That's all I'm asking. Thank you.
Thank you, Enrique. Next, we have Ray Abalea.
Hi, Mayor and Half Moon Bay City Council. My name is Ray Abalea. Over the past year, ALAS here in Half Moon Bay has coordinated a county-wide community assessment to learn more about factors that influence substance abuse and mental health in the Latino community here in the county and how to better prevent substance abuse. When we worked together with community organizations across the county, including the Boys and Girls Club of the Coastside, on this assessment that was funded by a grant from the San Mateo County Behavioral Health and Recovery Services, we got some shocking but not surprising results. Over 500 surveys and 120 interviews consistently showed that the urgent need to address mental health and substance abuse is to address the cost of living in our area. Adults who worried about affording the basics were more likely to use substances and were also more likely to experience three or more days of loneliness, sadness, or depression in the past month. A crucial way to address increased anxiety and mental health issues is to address affordable housing and the cost of living. 51% of the people surveyed said they worry from time to time about having to pay for the very basics like food, rent, and utilities. 28% often worry about these things. Our number-one recommendation from this assessment is to address financial challenges, to support families, to survive and thrive in this economy. And let me just say something personally as someone who grew up here on the coast. You remember in the '90s, those hair club commercials where that guy would say, "I'm not just the CEO of the hair club, I'm also a client"? Let me just say, I'm not someone who helps to organize this kind of research and data and numbers. I'm also a renter. And I never thought I would see a day, growing up here, that it would be so unbelievably unaffordable to find a place to live. Any renter on the coast side can tell you that. I want to underscore the point that Tony Serrano Garcia made, that when you think about rent control, think about mental health. Think about advocating for public health. Thank you.
Thank you, Ray. And now, we have some members on Zoom.
Yes, Joanne, you're up.
Thank you so much, City Council, for allowing the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Joanne Rakoski. I'm a member of Coastside Faith in Action and the Unitarian Universalist Coastside Community. I thank you, first of all, for your commitment to creating and maintaining affordable housing in Half Moon Bay, especially for those of low, very low, and extremely low income. As noted in the document for the study session, preventing displacement of those currently housed is vitally important while developing additional housing. The new housing does not magically appear. It takes time. So, I applaud your efforts in this regard and particularly acknowledge the commitment in the presented document to creating protections for subtenants who rent one or more rooms without having a signed lease in place. And I also appreciate your intent to make sure that provisions of current law are actually implemented in Half Moon Bay, whether by education or by city ordinance, to authorize local government enforcement of the existing state laws. I ask you at this point to make sure that in the work ahead, that the city addresses the gaps in both current AB 1482 and SB 567, which will be implemented in March 2024. Now that the San Mateo Board of Supervisors has paused their efforts toward tenant protection, it falls upon the local jurisdictions to better protect current renters, and their needs have been amply documented. Although lots of gaps remain despite these two bills, I call particular attention to the fact that the protections in 1482 and in 567 do not apply during the first year of tenancy. You can see the challenge and the potential for abuse that could result from eviction at day 364. The tenants need protection from day one. And again, I thank you for the opportunity to make a public comment.
Thank you, Joanne.
Next, we have Roe v. Lynn.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. My name is Roe v. Lynn Antonio with the California Apartment Association. We represent rental housing providers and operators in San Mateo County. I wanted to provide some information to help supplement your discussion this evening based on the information that was presented by staff. One thing regarding the question on enforcement, whether it's private or local enforcement, I wanted to first clarify that SB 567, which was signed by Governor Newsom last year, enhanced the statewide Tenant Protection Act to actually include a local enforcement mechanism that authorizes your local city attorney to enforce aspects of the AB 1482 rent control and just cause eviction, meaning that under SB 567, cities locally can now have the city attorney nullify termination of notices or rent increases if the owner is not in compliance with the state's Tenant Protection Act. I believe that information is very useful in your conversation tonight about enforcement. I also wanted to recognize staff's acknowledgement that there is statewide rent control. And the Half Moon Bay benefits from that. No longer you are seeing rents increase by 20% or above or double-digit even, given that the statewide 1482 does cap rents. On the comment regarding the just-cause evictions, I wanted to remind this council that you have your own local minimum lease term agreement to close the gap for people that don't have just-cause eviction from day one to year one of tenancy, so that has already been addressed. A couple of issues too regarding anti-discrimination. That is already a law. It's illegal to discriminate anybody based on immigration status, income, or gender, or marital status. And also regarding the subtenancy, I just wanted to let you know that the under-regular standard operation, subtenancy is typically not allowed. Meaning, if a tenant wants to sublease their a unit that they are renting, they have to ask permission from the property owner if that is allowed. If it's not, then that's actually a cost for termination. So, regulating the subtenancy, I'm not sure how that works because in that situation, you have the renter actually becoming the landlord as a master tenant. So, the question is, who is going to enforce any of these policies? Are you enforcing it against the owner or the master tenant who violated the lease to begin with by having subleasing? Finally, really support additional farmworker housing, more rental assistance, and please, find a way to really look at your landlord mediation program that you implemented in 2020. Look at the results and finding ways of how can this be more utilized, encourage residents when there is a tenant and landlord dispute. I think a lot of the conflicts that we may be hearing is based on not understanding the full extent of the law, and a landlord and tenant mediation would definitely help in that effort. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next, we have Alice.
Hi. Thank you so much again for addressing this, the City Council members and staff and all the research that's gone into it. I just want to underline what everyone has been, well, what a number of the speakers have been saying is that it's very important that the city is the enforcement and the oversight of all of this for people to go privately. People that I speak to are, A, unable to take off work to go to legal aid, B, afraid, and C, are also people who are not ones to make complaints. So, in the meantime, I do hear a lot of what's going on is just constant raising of the rents. Even, we just had a friend here recently that they raised the rent three times over the course of six months. He didn't even have a rental agreement from this person. So, I think it's really wise of the city to gather that data to know what's going on within our jurisdiction. I mean, I think we know what happened and how shocked we were about the housing conditions of the farmworkers on the mushroom farm and how badly we felt that we didn't know what was going on. I think it's really important that the city knows what's going on in the city and also is there to help protect the tenants in this. So, any and all of these of the above that you had mentioned are really great steps towards it. Ultimately, if we could start with a lower rent to begin with, and I know that's not part of this, but that's the reason why there's subtenancy is because people can't afford what the market rate is at this point. And there are people that are hardworking that we need. So, I encourage you to do everything you can on behalf of the people who are holding our city together. So, thank you.
Thank you, Alice.
Next, we have Saulo.
Thank you, council. Appreciate your time. My name is Saulo Longdongo, and I'm with WMA. We work with owners and managers of mobile home communities in California. I'm here today to recommend against including mobile home rent control as part of the Tenant Protection Plan. Mobile home residents in Half Moon Bay currently have what we in the unique mobile home industry call a careful balance. So, what does this mean? It means mobile homes sell in a timely fashion, and they grow their value year after year. It also means rents in Half Moon Bay mobile home parks are lower than rents in nearby communities. Communities that are located in the unincorporated part of the county and in such are subject to rent control. Your own staff report reflects this. So, how is it possible that the mobile home rents in Half Moon Bay are lower than those in rent control areas of the county? Due to the uniqueness of this housing model, operating these mobile home communities is basically like managing a little city. So, to us, it's no surprise that the mobile So to us, it's no surprise that the mobile home rents in Half Moon Bay are lower. I mentioned a careful balance because the balance can be very easily disturbed by outside factors such as rent control. We know that mobile home rent control ordinances lead to. They lead to less housing stock, more deferred maintenance in these communities. They lead to higher costs for everybody involved, and they always lead to a more adversarial relationship between the residents, the city, and community managers, which is not what you guys should want. These are your local business owners and affordable housing providers. They're not faceless international corporations. These are family businesses that have operated in your city for over 50 years. In the case of Canada Cove, Vance and his dad have been operating in that community since before Vance was a teenager. We urge you not to include mobile home rent control as part of the tenant protection plan. Maintain that careful balance that exists in Half Moon Bay mobile home parks. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have no more public speakers online right now.
Thank you, Maggie. That brings us back to council. And who would like to start?
I would.
Councilmember Rarback.
What are we doing here? Why do we care? It seems to me that we really have an obligation to our lower-income renters in Half Moon Bay. Anybody who's been to any city council meeting in the last year has heard these horrible stories of large families sharing a room without access to kitchens, substandard conditions, rent being raised arbitrarily. I believe that the issue of lower-income families having the ability not to worry about rents going up and up is really important. But there's a whole cascade of issues that are all interrelated. And that is that the...
That's not the way I want to handle it. You can do it that way if you want, but...
Sorry. The issue is that many, many of the people that we want to protect, and as we've heard, there's probably over 1,000 in Half Moon Bay, are involved with a room-sharing, house-sharing, subtenancy. And if we are going to protect those people, then the first thing we need to do is find out who they are. And the only way to really do that is to have licensing and registration of the landlords who are renting to these people. And after that, we need to encourage absolutely the rental agreements being written down, not just the verbal agreements that often occur, so that we know who is charging what for the rental of these often shared houses, duplexes, triplexes. So I urge us in our ordinance to require licensing and registration. I also encourage us to educate the renters to know that their rights are going to be protected a lot more if there are written rental agreements. So that's the first thing that we need to do. I also think that we should use the Costa-Hawkins model because that would allow the city to cap the rent increases at less than the current 1482. I would, as my own personal opinion, like to cap the rents at 5% a year or the CPI, whichever is lower. I think that's a reasonable way to protect the rental of our lower-income people. And the last thing, and this is sort of peripheral, I've received over 75 emails, almost all from realtors. Sam Carr is apparently encouraging people to write. Almost all the 75 are from outside the coast side. And one of the people mentioned as a, what he or she thought was a deterrent, that if Half Moon Bay passes this rent control, then God knows what's going to happen to the rest of the communities in the county, that they would then be inspired by the fact that we wanted to protect our lower-income renters, and they might then implement rent control. I think that's a wonderful thing. I think we should be leaders here. I think we should protect our lower-income people. But we need to do it in an intelligent way that we can actually stop the home sharing and the subtenancy so that we have a handle on that. And I'm willing to have the city pay $200,000 or so to implement this because I believe it's really important to protect our workers who are the backbone of the city. So that's my position. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Rarback. Vice Mayor Jimenez.
Thank you. Let's do a little bit of history. Gentrification. You know, our community was really affected by gentrification back in 2017. 2018 came around the corner, and during that year, the beginning of the year, more than 50 families were evicted in less than a year. 50 families. That's a lot. There was no reason for eviction. There was no cost for eviction. I heard from the realtors, actually it was you who went to the pops and moms, you know, businesses, apartments, houses, asking them to raise the rents because there were costs. Actually, they could get more money out of them. I remember that. I was personally here, if you go back on the Half Moon Bay Review, March 2018, with more than 300 signatures, you know, from the community requesting rent control. Because of the evictions that were happening, and still happening. Those evictions of 2017, 2018 were caused, it was for families to move in with other families. That's what happened from there. Many families were not able to move anywhere else. Some families moved out of the area, out of the state, moving to Oregon, Washington, Nevada. Some left the country because they could not afford to be here anymore. The rents were going up. It was ridiculous just to find out how much, you know, the rents were going up. It's still happening right now because there's no control. There's no contract. And you were talking about discrimination. It's illegal to discriminate. When a low-income community goes out to apply for an apartment to rent, there's ways that you can discriminate against them. You know how to do it. You're within all your legal right to do that, but that is discrimination because there's no, they're undocumented, because they don't make enough income a year. You have too many kids. All that, all those reasons. You know, I'm sorry, somebody else got the apartment. So we have to do, I strongly support rent control on Half Moon Bay, strongly support. Because you already heard data from Tony, from Ray, about, you know, how it's affecting our community or children. So I'm, of course, I'm going to support rent control. Like I said, check and go back to the newspaper, 2018, where we requested rent control because what it was happening. Now, our Latino community or low-income community, not just Latinos, but other low-income communities, they're struggling. And that's affecting our children. Father was going out in the schools. The use of alcohol and drugs at young age. That, all that comes from how they live. It's not only with the adults. It's not only the adults are actually dealing with, you know, the use of drugs and alcohol to cope. The children. Check their grades. Go to the school district and request the school grades, how they're affected by that. They don't have a place to do homework. There's no privacy. They live in dangerous conditions because they have microwaves and small refrigerators in each of the rooms for them to keep the food, for them to cook the food because they're not able to afford the high rents that continue to go up. 5% rent. Raise, I mean, every year, we're talking about 5%. That's nothing. We have renters in Half Moon Bay that are actually increasing the rents 20, 30, 50%, three or four times a year. We have families paying $1,500 for an apartment. The landlord was, oh, now you're going to be $3,000. So how can you not think about rent control? So don't, I know about pops and moms, you know, apartments, how they were against that, you know, raising the rents because you were pushing them to, say, oh, you can make more money. That's gentrification. Moving our low-income community out of the coast. You heard from other people. It is a low-income community, the base of our economy, and yes, they do not get a retirement. When they move out, their retirement stays here. You know how much they get in retirement if you work as a farmworker to the age of 65? $700 a month. That's our retirement they get. Some get even less. A few weeks ago, two weeks ago, where oldish farmworker passed, he worked to the age of 84 because he cannot make rent with his retirement. He got, he was ill, and about a couple of weeks ago, he passed. Imagine you working to the age of 84 in the farm. So now, do you want rent control? I do. This is statistics that show why we need rent control. There's data. So I know, of course, rent control. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Brownstone.
Well, first, thank you for everyone who has spoken here, called in, given us your opinions. Thank you, Councilmember Rarback Jimenez, for your perspectives. You know, I remember when I first ran for office on city council, part of the process was having a number of organizations saying, if you would like our endorsement, fill out this survey and then come and speak to us. And one of them was Sam Carr. And it said in the survey, before I even spoke to anyone, it said, "If you run for council and win, do you promise never to support any rent control ordinances and say anything or campaign for rent control?" And I remember that. And I was kind of, and I went to the meeting. And I was very clear at the beginning of the meeting that I wasn't looking for the endorsement because I was offended by those requirements before I even ran for office. I grew up in a rent-controlled apartment in New York City, in the Bronx. Beautiful six-story building, ivy-covered, nice park across the street. And every year, there were, you know, probably 5% rent raises. And, and very close-knit community. Had a happy childhood in the neighborhood, loved living in the building. They painted every four or five years if you asked for in the apartment. It seemed to work well. And so I've always been a strong supporter of rent control. And read all the emails that I got from realtors. And, you know, it was kind of a cut-and-paste email. And I'm just trying to figure out why the community of folks, you know, mostly realtors, I mean, do you, I'm not sure how you see this city. I mean, we're a city that takes care of our homeless. We have a beautiful transitional facility. We have cares so that first responders to mental health situations aren't always sheriffs. They're people who can handle and deescalate crises. We have abundant grace that helps provide livable wages and honorable work for homeless folks. We have a project at 555 Kelly in collaboration with Mercy Housing, which is a nonprofit housing organization that builds very high-quality housing. I don't understand why you would think this is a community which wouldn't support rent control. Because we're a community. We're only as strong as our weakest links in our community. People who don't have access to expensive attorneys. People who can barely afford sometimes, have to make choices between paying the rent and feeding their families. And we've heard these stories here for not just this last year. I've been hearing them for four years. And students coming in from the high school before COVID, when we had life sessions before COVID, telling us they didn't, couldn't even have a space to study in their own homes. So yeah, I think that, you know, if you have mom and pop landlords with families and children, and you've said, you know, there's good landlords here. I feel probably most of them are. And this isn't really going to get in the way of those landlords, but it will protect folks who overcharge. I mean, I heard someone talk about, hey, free markets, you know, it's anything but free, this rental market. And there's always people who look for less-than-reasonable profits. And some people look for obscene profits. So I think rent control, I think we could put good process in place. I really liked what Roe v. Lynn Antonio talked about, that yeah, our own city attorney can nullify unreasonable rent increases and evictions. So I think we should pursue a rent control policy here. I need to think a little more about the mobile home in... I need to think a little more about the mobile home in, um, in the Cove. I wasn't sure. I don't know how many of those, um, homes are rented in terms of, yeah. So I'm not sure we, I don't know how much oversight we need on that. I don't know, I don't know enough. So, um, someone just said zero to really rent it out. So, you know, we could look into that. I don't want to over-regulate where it's not necessary. But I just really appreciate this council and its willingness to always look out for those who need a helping hand, not a handout. These aren't folks looking for handouts, you know? Just a helping hand from being overcharged when it's not necessary. So that's where I stand.
Thank you, Councilmember Brownstone. Councilmember Reddick.
I certainly would support revisiting the city's residential rental security measures. I think there's a lot of abuses still happening. I'm guessing that the primary landlord's probably getting a cut from the sub-tenancy, which is very unsavory. Okay. I think there's a lot of abuses going on, and I think we need to take a look at stopping those. So as the county looked at their tenant protection measures, I think it would be good to look a little deeper. I certainly, if we can register and license landlords, I think that's a great idea. I'm in favor of data collection. I totally hear everything everybody is saying about the problems we have with housing. They're immense. And Half Moon Bay is not going to solve them, right? And including, you know, rent control. It's not going to roll back rents. Yes, it might lower the rates that they can be increased, but it's not going to really solve the problem. We need more housing. We need more assistance from the federal government. The federal government is supposed to be the primary agency for funding housing. It's standards that are nationwide, and it's not happening. So I hear you. I suffer with you. I want to build as much new housing as we can. But I don't have enough information to support rent control at this time. I especially am having a hard time wrapping my mind around the cost for setting up a rental-controlled bureaucracy within the city, including enforcement, possible litigation. I think it's probably more than $300,000 a year. But, you know, the next item on the agenda is the quarterly financial report. We know that we have a structural deficit for the next many years, four or five years. That means that we're already spending more than we're taking in. The hotel business is down, sales tax is down. The city is losing money. I don't think you can say we're broke, but we're spending more than we're taking in. You know, we have to pay the county a lot more money than we were paying the I-bank for the lease at Stone Pine. We still have the library to pay off. Right now, based on what I know about the finances, I can't support anything that's going to add new staff. You know, we'd have to use our existing housing staff. So, you know, if you want my support for, it sounds like you don't need it for rent control, I need to understand a lot more about the cost. Because I also have, when I became a city council member, I assumed a fiduciary responsibility. I'm in effect a trustee. I have to keep the city afloat. I have to manage our money appropriately. My heart goes out to you, but I have to pay attention to the books as well. And that's just the bottom line. It sounds cold, but if we don't have money, we can't help you. And there's no new money on the horizon. So at this time, I can support increased protections, or looking at increased protections, trying to stop abuses, helping the situation as it exists today. But I can't, at this time, without a lot more information, support a rent control ordinance. We don't have the economies of scale to pay us back, to make it work, as far as I can tell, on the limited information I have. So at this time, I can't support my fellow council members on moving forward. I understand the problem. I'd like us to solve it. I can't support rent control at this time. And I'm sorry, I know it's not what you wanted to hear, but I feel I have additional responsibilities as your city council member. And that means managing taxpayer money appropriately and keeping the city afloat. And you're going to learn, this next item, that we've got real financial problems. So I don't know how you, you know, expect to pay for this. It has to be paid for. So that's where I'm coming down.
Thank you, Councilmember Reddick. I have to say that I appreciate your point of view, but I have to say that I disagree with it. It's, um, my job as council member is to represent the people of my community. And the people of my community are comprised of 30% Latinos, most of whom are not living well. Most of whom are living poorly. Most of whom are struggling. And they're my constituents. They're the most needy of my constituents. So if I have to prioritize, I'm going to be looking at the folks that need help the most first. Not that I don't care about the others or about our fiduciary situation. But I, my heart bleeds. I can't stand listening to the lives that these people are living. I am absolutely for rent control. I am not necessarily for rent control for the rest of the century. I think it would be reasonable to look to limiting it to a certain number of years. One of the things that we're trying to do is build affordable housing. And I see this as a stopgap measure until we get more affordable housing built. I don't know that that's going to happen quickly. We've got 98, 97 units on the horizon that we may be able to say we've got in the next year or so. But that doesn't cover the amount that we need, certainly. But it's a beginning. And in the meantime, I think protecting our most vulnerable is critical. So I am in favor of the Costa-Hawkins approach. I would like to see us put a limit of 5% or the CPI, which either is, whichever is lower, on rent increases. I would like to see us absolutely license and, and, license and register all of our renters. I think until we do that, we're not going to know what all the abuse is that's going on. I am not particularly, I don't feel well-informed about mobile home parks. I haven't heard from mobile home residents. I haven't heard them coming and saying, our rents are too high. So until we have more information from the constituents, from the folks that live there, I don't want to deal with mobile home rents and rent control. But I am coming down in favor of an approach that Councilmember Rhabak has taken and Councilmember Brownstone and Vice Mayor Jimenez have. I am definitely in favor of it, and I am definitely in favor of the Costa-Hawkins approach.
I agree with the mayor that it would be reasonable to limit or sunset rent control to three or five years. In that time, we will know more whether we can actually have, built enough affordable housing. I believe that the tenant protection ordinance that we've already passed hasn't really resulted in any actual help to any tenants, as far as I know. There's been no mediation. There's been no action that has helped any tenants. Not that it wasn't a well-meaning idea. It just doesn't actually result in any useful protections. I also agree that the mobile home space rental control is not something that, at this point, makes a lot of sense. So I wouldn't support that. We haven't talked about item four, the code enforcement-related relocation assistance. I'm strongly in favor of that. Had we had that relocation assistance in place when the shootings occurred in January, the people who had been displaced by the shootings would have had a decent chance to relocate with a reasonable amount of assistance. And I think that we owe it to this, our citizens who get evicted because they're living in substandard conditions, that we do give them, I don't know, two or three months' rent minimum. So that's where I'm coming up on these additional questions that have been asked of the council. Thank you.
Councilmember Brownstone.
Yeah, I want to address some of what Councilmember Reddick talked about because I, too, am on our finance committee.
I'm resigning.
You're resigning? Oh, okay. Well, I'm on the finance committee. So I am also looking pretty carefully at our budgets. And I also was concerned about, you know, the administrative costs and how much it will actually end up costing. And we have to look at that a little more deeply. We can charge fees, which I imagine, even conservatively, could pay for at least $75,000, you know, half of that cost. And we can see about other, you know, looking within our current budget. Because, you know, Councilmember Reddick, you've often talked about mental health issues being one of your key areas of attention this year. And I know it came up when we talked about funding for Alice to provide mental health services, and we didn't agree on that. But we hear incessantly about the mental health issues created by expensive housing. So to me, this is a mental health issue. I can't prove how many people will have better mental health if they're not constantly worried about having their rents raised, you know, 10 or 20% in a year. And, you know, maybe we'll look at our community funding grants also. Take some money towards that to get this thing off the ground. You know, whatever it takes. I think mental health of our community, you really can't, you really can't estimate the cost of people driven to the edge by financial stress. You can't really measure those costs. And we can't go in there and say, hey, look what happened here, or this incident. We could, you know, you can't put a cost on that. So I think rent control in this community is also a mental health issue. And so it's another way of impacting community mental health. And we've had a number of speakers address that specifically and the research that's out there. So we'll figure it out. We'll protect our budget. And that's what we do. We are fiduciaries for the budget, and we're also here as protectors of the health and safety of our community. So we'll figure out that balance. I trust that we will.
I'd like to say one more thing about, about our priorities. We have spent a lot of time and a lot of energy in the last five years trying to get a community perspective on what they want to see from the council. We've opened up, opened up. We have listening sessions. We listen to folks talk. We have made translation possible. We have folks that speak only Spanish. We have translators for them so that we can hear their voices. And we've got five priorities that we allowed ourselves this year. The first priority is affordable housing. This is what we're talking about. Right now, we're talking about affordable housing. And we're not talking about having affordable housing. We're talking about keeping the unaffordable housing less damaging, less awful, putting some, some sort of a rein on it. It's not enough. It's never going to be enough. Rent control is not the answer. The answer is building more housing, period. But in the meantime, people are suffering. And this is our priority, and it's my priority. Let's get it done.
Mayor, if, if, if I could, just for clarity, could we, if, I don't want to stop the conversation, if there's still a conversation, but it would be helpful for us to just walk briefly through for five minutes, sort of just getting clarification on what we think we heard from you. And maybe that's the easier answer for us is to, is to basically tell you what we, what we think you said, and then you can correct, or you can define it out from that point. But I think three to five minutes maximum would be, sorry, again, would be helpful, just to be clear, and also for the record and for the folks in the audience, too. But, but I don't, I don't want to belabor the point.
By all means.
Thank you. I will say what we've heard tonight, go back, go back, go back. I want to just make sure we're, is that we've heard consensus that yes, on rent control, and a consensus, not everybody, but a consensus that yes, to private, to city enforced and Costa-Hawkins. And we've also heard yes to licensing or registration and initiating that sort of right up front to get a better handle on, on the numbers and who. Fair enough? Is that what, okay. Thank you. Next. We've heard, I think, around and about yes to proceeding with tenant protections, obviously including anti-discrimination and other related protections, sub-tenancy issues to the extent that we can, enhancing what we're doing already under existing regulations and ordinances that are in place. But how do we build on those from that point? Fair?
Yeah, with emphasis on trying to educate renters that it's in their advantage to have a written agreement, because that's not the case now.
Fair enough. Thank you. Click. We've heard a consensus, I believe, to table mobile home space rental control for the time being. Like you, we have not heard a peep from folks, and that's unusual in this community. If they have, if this community wants to speak, they will speak. I think their silence has spoken, so thank you. And is that fair enough for tabling that? And what I've generally heard is a consensus to move forward with the code enforcement-related relocation. Thank you. If I could, just two minutes. Next is just, obviously, mobile home out of there. From staff's perspective, we've heard a desire to look at all of these. And frankly, they, tenant protections and rent control go together. And the code enforcement-related relocation expenses is really a separate issue. So absent the mobile home, I don't know that there's really a prioritization that occurs here other than we're, we would be ramping up on probably both of those tracks. And as painful as that is to say, to some extent, because of the work that that's going to be, I just don't think there's a, probably a way around that. And I think that's going to be your desire to do, as well as the community's. to be your desire to do, as well as the community's. Am I sensing that from the council?
I think so.
Okay. That would conclude that perspective from that. Thank you for clarification for us and for, I think, for the record and the community.
Thank you. Anything else from any council member? Are we all finished, city staff? Anything that you need to say?
I apologize if I missed. I think John did a great job summarizing, and I think my notes reflect what John just shared back to you. So I think the direction is clear. We will return likely December 5th with more specifics to our plan, although it's clear. So I don't think there's a lot of discussion that probably needs to happen December 5th, so we may forego that and just go straight into working on the ordinances so that you can start reviewing the details of that and the nuances of that.
Great. Thank you very much.
And I'll just say, you know, staff heard loud and clear the urgency and the priority to this, and so it will be a focus of staff over the next couple of months so we can get this moved forward.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now move on to item 3C.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have Ken Stiles, our finance manager, coming up to the dais to present on this item. And I will also play a role in the discussion tonight.
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members of the public. Today, we are presenting the financial and treasurer's report. This is a presentation that's quarterly done, and this is where the first quarter ended So this presentation is pretty high-level, but in the agenda packet, there's much more detail and analysis. I'll be walking through the revenues, expenditures, and our outlook. Starting with revenues, we have our major revenues with a comparison to the prior year based on budget. Because we are quarter through, it's intuitive to think that revenue should be about, should be 25% of budget. But remember that revenue's timing can be different based on the revenue. For example, property taxes, we get two large payments in December and in April. So because we don't receive revenues timely evenly, we compare that with the prior year. Starting with TOT, we budgeted 9.6. We've received about 9.61. This is about 10% of the budget. It's close to what it was doing last year during the same time period, but it's still stagnating, and we're still keeping our eye on that. As council members, TOT has taken a dip since February, beginning this year, and we're still kind of, we're still recovering from that. And I have more information on the next slide. Property taxes, we had a budget of 3.9. We had $12,000. Again, we get this, our first big payment in December, so this is trending exactly as expected. Sales and use taxes, we budgeted 3.2. We received almost 300K. We're doing ever so slightly better than last year in comparison, so this is tracking as anticipated. It's still a little bit early, but it's nice to see that it's going along as we planned. Other revenues, we've received about half a mil. We've budgeted 4.4. Again, this category is also tracking as anticipated. So overall, we've received about 9% of what we budgeted for in comparison with last year. It's about the same percentage-wise. So on paper, looking at this, it looks like we're trending along, but TOT is still remaining a line item that we're closely watching. This chart shows our TOT for the past 12 months compared with the year prior. The darker teal is for 2023, and the gray columns are from the year prior. As you can see, we got our first dip in November. It spiked up in January. We thought, well, maybe we had a moment and we'd recover, but since February, it's been down. There is a bit of a silver lining in that July and August, the first two months of this fiscal year, the gap is a little bit closer than what we saw in February, but we're still keeping our eye on it. One of the big questions that kind of arises when we look at this chart is, well, what happens if we don't hit our TOT number this year? We didn't hit it last year. We're still holding, we're still looking to see if we're going to hit it this year. And if we don't, luckily, the city does have unassigned funds that act as a cushion. I have an upcoming slide on that. But our unassigned funds right now are estimated to be 1.4 million at the end of this fiscal year. So if we were to have a shortfall, still way too early to tell, we do have a little bit of a cushion there. On the expenditure side, we are looking good. Because expenditures are a bit more regular and more timely, we look to see if we're at underneath that 25% budget. That's our benchmark for our operating departments. So with all of our departments being underneath that and overall being under by 11%, it's looking decent. We do have some salary savings that we're expecting that will come to realize at the end of the year. A couple of departments have vacancies. We've chosen to hold them open until we know more information about how this year is going to turn out. Historically, we tend to finish fiscal years coming under budget. Last year, that happened. We came under budget by about a million, half of that being salary savings. If that trend continues, and we have some savings at the end of next year, at the end of this year, that would be helpful as we go into the budget process for '24, '25. Here's how our fund balances and reserves look like, estimated to be at the end of June 30th, 2024. This table has two columns. The first column is showing what numbers we adopted a budget at back in April. So when we adopted this year's budget in April, we did not know what our beginning unassigned balances were going to be. We had thought that we were, and we adopted a budget planning for having unassigned be at 185,000. Then we adopted the budget. We had a couple more months of activity, financial activity. We had our audit in September, and then we were finally able to close the books for last year. With the final number for our beginning balance, we had some savings because we came under budget expenditure-wise, and that flushed through to our unassigned. So that's why at the bottom of the table, you see, back in June, we thought, oh, we're going to have about 200K. Now, we're thinking around 1.4 million. And another note is that reserves are at 11 million, which is fully funded. This goes into next year while we have unassigned fund balances estimated to be 1.4 million. Going into 2024, 2025, we are looking at an estimated deficit of around 3.9 million. As council remembers, this is mostly due to rising costs of existing services and the loss of ARPA funds. As mentioned previously, if we end the year with some unassigned fund balances, this can mitigate some of this deficit. So, for example, if we end the year at 1.4, that deficit of 4 comes down, because we can use that to meet the deficit. But for today, and as staff is working through this, we're working with 4 million being our marker. We have a task list. Currently, we're working on the cost allocation and fee study. This is to make sure that the fees that we are charging cover the cost of such services. We're also meeting weekly to review all the expenditures line by line, asking ourselves if there's any flexibility or adjustments that can be made, anything that can optimize or limit the cost. And then also, we're doing, we're identifying any revenue enhancement options. I do want to stress that staff is working behind the scenes to curate the information, but this isn't an opaque process. Once we work through all the options and pathways, and we will bring those, we will present those updates to the finance committee for a discussion and input. And from there, we have a mid-year and then another budget process to go through those Then finally, the last quick bit on the treasurer's report. This report just details what our cash balances are at. At the end of September, we had 47 million, about 15 million out of general fund, and then our average yield was 2.9%, which is up from last year. Last year, at this time, was 1.2. With that, I would take any questions. The recommendations is as follows, except the financial report and the treasurer's report for the quarter ended on September 30th, 2023.
Thank you for a very good report. I appreciate it was very clear the trouble that we're in and what we have to look forward to. Questions from council members?
Madam Mayor, if I might, if I could just take a moment to just share a little bit more perspective before we go to questions? Thank you. There's two things I want to point out, and, you know, they're not great, but I think it really spells out what we're facing in front of us. So the first thing I want to just talk about is, maybe, Ken, if you could go back to the reserves and fund balances slide, slide number five, I believe, that's the one there. So, you know, the good news is, we finished last year, you know, there's this kind of dual process that happens with our budget, because we have to make guesses about upcoming budgets based on what we know while the fiscal year is still wrapping up. And then, as Ken indicated, we have to go through a closeout of the year, go through an audit before we know how we actually finish the year. So the good news is, this past year, like many previous years, we finished in a better position than we estimated. We're very conservative. We don't want to make assumptions about things that we can't substantiate. And so, as you see at the bottom on the right, our unassigned fund balance or savings at the end of this fiscal year is now estimated to be 1.5 million, as opposed to the 185,000. But that can be a little bit deceiving, because as we look up above in the top section, we started this fiscal year with $6.3 million of unassigned fund balances, which means we've spent down about $5 million of unaside fund balance, or we've kind of burned through, we have our reserves, which are like really dedicated savings, and we burned through $5 million of other savings. And we know what caused that. It's a combination of the major increases to law enforcement costs this fiscal year that we didn't anticipate and kind of came up right before the budget process and really changed our financial outlook. But because we had a lot of unassigned fund balance and a lot of, we're strong in our reserves, we felt comfortable moving forward with business as usual and giving ourselves this year to really dig in and find improvements to our budget in future years. That being said, as Ken has showed, we're really careful about how we spend, and we've already realized a lot of savings this fiscal year, and we'll continue to look for those things. So then, if we go to slide number six, just the next one. Oh, yes.
Can you talk about how much the increase in sheriff's cost?
Sure. So the sheriff's contract increased by about $1.5 million per year, and that will grow over time, not to the same degree that it did this year. And just, if anybody's listening in, just a little bit of background, the city contracts with the county for both sheriff and 911 dispatch services, several cities within the county do this because the cost of providing these services on our own would be very prohibitive. We don't have the economies of scale to make, you know, make these more affordable. Every so often, I can't recall the exact timeline, but the county legally has to go through a cost study to make sure that the fees they are charging for services are actually recovering the costs that they expend to provide those services. And unfortunately, as they did that this past year, they discovered they were undercharging for a lot of services. Now, we benefited from that in the past, but of course, it is really hard to adjust on the fly to these significant changes that we're looking at going forward, and we're not alone in this. Many cities in the county are struggling with this. So about a million and a half a year for police services, over $500,000 a year for 911 dispatch services. So that's a little over $2 million of that $4 million deficit was caused just on that action alone. It still leaves several million dollars that we are, and maybe I'll explain that as I go into this next slide. I do want to explain some terminology. You've heard several times tonight the term "structural deficit" come up, and I think it's an important term, because there's a one-time deficit where, say, we've got a balanced budget, but there's a really, really important initiative that the city wants to take care of on a one-time basis. Maybe we want to, you know, fix a major road, or there's an emergency that we need to fix a road, or there's a big park project. And we might decide, you know what? It's worth spending some of our reserves or some of this savings we have to make that project happen. And that's a deficit, because we're spending money that isn't coming in, we're spending money we've saved, but that's a one-time deficit. You spend the money, and then the next year, you're right back to a balanced budget. Unfortunately, that's not the situation we're in right now. We have what's called a structural deficit, that if we don't change anything, we are not bringing in as much money as we are obligated to spend based on the current services we provide and the current contracts that we have to be entered into to provide those services, which means we have to make changes to balance that budget over the long term, because the only way to make up that deficit is to spend our savings. And as we've seen, we're spending a lot of it this year, and then we start carrying it to reserves, and pretty soon, that money runs out, and now you don't have any way to balance that budget. So we really have an opportunity to look at our spending and our revenues and make changes, structural changes that are ongoing, to balance our budget and make sure we're fiscally solvent going forward, so that we don't have to use those reserves to balance our budget in the short term and certainly not in the long term. So to Ken's point, $4 million is our target to adjust, because that is the deficit ongoing. I will be honest, I don't think we fix it in one year. I think that's a lot of adjustment that we would have to make. And of course, as he's mentioned, we're looking at making sure we're charging the right amount for our services. We're looking at our expenditures to see where we can make cuts and streamline our expenses, and we're looking at revenue enhancement options. To do all of that and account for $4 million in one year is pretty challenging, but it is something we're going to have to accomplish over the next couple of years before we start spending down our reserves. So it's a big task. As Ken mentioned, we are meeting on a weekly basis to really dig in on all these issues, and starting in the next few weeks, we will begin meeting with the finance subcommittee to share what we're finding, share our recommendations, to collaborate and think through opportunities to deal with the three different areas that are opportunities, and start finding solutions that we can start implementing this fiscal year, next fiscal year, and going forward with the goal of balancing this budget and maintaining the reserves that we have. So that was a mouthful, but I think it's important for folks to understand, we're in a situation that's not sustainable right now, and so we've got to make some major changes to get ourselves in a sustainable situation.
And that is, didn't we recently do a fee study? And when you say, go back to that last slide, sorry. No, the summit, the next slide, I guess, after this. And that is, didn't we recently do a fee study? And when you say, go back to that last slide. Sorry. No, the summit, the next slide, I guess, after this. Cost allocation and fee study. Is that one study?
It's one study, and we initiated it at the beginning of this fiscal year. So it was budgeted to be done in this fiscal year. It started, it's a long process. There's a lot of, we have a consultant that is helping to do that because it's beyond, you know, our capacity to sit down and dig in on. Ken, do we have any estimates of when that study will actually be complete?
The goal is mid-year.
Okay. So we hope to have that wrapped up by the end of this year so that when we hit mid, end of this calendar year, so that when we hit the mid-year budget revisions, we have a sense of where we might be able to make changes. Probably those changes would be implemented in the next fiscal year because it would require changes to our fee schedule and some notice to the people that we charge those fees to.
All right. Thank you. Questions from council members? Comments?
The only comment is I urge the city to identify the revenue enhancement options, but that's preaching to the choir.
Thank you, Ken. Great report.
Do we need to just check to see if there's any public comment?
We should check for public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on this? Do we have anyone on Zoom?
We have no online speakers, Mayor.
Thank you. And I'm really glad one of you is always watching me on that because I will always screw it up. I figured out. Okay. With that, we go to, trying to find the agenda here.
Mayor, could we, could someone make a motion, please?
Yes. Could we have a motion?
I move that we accept the financial report and the treasurer's report for the quarter ended on September 30, 2023.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Any noes? Thank you. Motion passed. We now can move to commission committee updates.
I don't believe we have any updates tonight.
Okay. For future discussion, possible agenda items. Nothing being.
Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Could I jump in on this one?
Sure.
Even though I'm not a council member?
Sure.
I just want to make notice, we're looking at scheduling a special meeting at the end of this month to discuss the minimum wage item. We would do it as a special study session. And as soon as we have that finalized and scheduled, we'll notify the community. And that may come with the cancellation of the November 21 meeting, which is during the week of Thanksgiving and probably not something anybody wants to do, you know, the day, two days before Thanksgiving.
Okay, great.
We'll obviously provide a lot of notice to the community and all of that.
Thank you. City council reports. Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all.